Julie's not here tonight, she couldn't be here, so it's the reason I'm sitting in her seat. So, we're gonna try and blow through this meeting and make sure everything's taken care of. So, this meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused at this time. Let us please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies, forgot to close executive session. So, can I have a motion to close executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. So, I'm going to go down to letter B, Presentations. There is nothing at this time. And before I go any further, I would like to say that item J5, and let me read that. Let me read it. The P-2436 Athletic Participation Fee Program Second Reading has been pulled from tonight's agenda. Okay, I'm gonna go to, actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hibbs for some commentary.
Hi, everybody, how we doing? Okay, let me start, let me start with that one. So, in case, in case you missed what that was, that was the pay-to-play for the 2025-2026 school year. So, the Board of Education is, has made the decision to pull that agenda item, and there will be no costs associated with pay-to-play for high school sports for this entire year. That's for this year. I think it was a good, healthy discussion, which I can't get into, but everybody here values the shared commitment we have to supporting students and families. We definitely recognize the importance of all that happens here, including athletics, teamwork, discipline, school spirit, personal growth, all great things that come from sports. So, this year, definitely, no fees. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't say that it could still be a conversation point moving forward, but for this year, it is, it is off the table. I also want to take a second, and you can see under the discussion items, this is just kind of a pre-celebration celebration. I didn't ask anyone to come, but I wanted to take a second to recognize our incredible countywide Teacher of the Year, Sandy Fitzpatrick. Let's give her a hand. So, not, not to bury the lead, she will be coming with a whole lot of people in September, and we'll do a formal celebration. So, I had the honor with her principal, Julie La Rubio, and Sandy to attend the College of New Jersey, which, last week, where all the countywide Teachers of the Year were celebrated. So, in case you don't know Sandy, or haven't been in her room or been around her, she's innovative and caring, her classroom management is second to none, she has her children just in incredible places and has such a drive and a love of kids. She's so special, and you may not know this, but the, the overall Teacher of the Year gets released from, they get released from teaching duties. Sandy was one person who actually said, "I do not want to be released from teaching duties, so I don't want to be considered for the overall Teacher of the Year." Which, I think, if that doesn't tell you everything about her, it's just, it's truly amazing. So, we're so incredibly proud of Sandy and all the work that she does and all of our Teachers of the Year, but Sandy really went far as the Gloucester County Teacher of the Year, so I just wanted to make sure that we celebrated her. Let's give her one more round of applause.
To Hibbs, can I say something to Sandy? Sandy, if you're watching, you know, I taught your three boys, you worked in my classroom for a while, then we were co-teachers across the hall from each other, and I was just thrilled when I saw this for you. You're so well-deserving, and every child that you've touched is so lucky to have had you or will have you as a teacher, so congratulations.
And this was, just so you know, we weren't not communicating this. They promised to take away our licenses if we talked about this. It was under lock and key. The DOE actually put the email out at, I think it was the Tuesday, at 3:00, so we weren't really allowed to even talk about it. So, they, they keep it hush-hush. For those of you that walked in, we made the announcement that pay-to-play is completely suspended for the 2025-2026 school year. So, in case you missed that. And on that same, on that same line, I want to take a second and recognize a few, a few people, some of which will rename, will remain nameless and others will not. So, Mr. Anderson put out an all-call to our community for, to support for extracurricular, for co-curriculars in clubs. And that really came back with such a resounding support that was truly amazing. And due to the generosity of, of just certain people at the high school, this year, we can put back in the French Club, the German Club, the Spanish Club, Students in Action, Save the People's Choice Awards, the Theater Club Advisor/Drama, ROTC Advisor, FBLA, and Project Unify. And just so you know, all of the honor societies are going to run this year. Some will be a mixture of the donor, and then some will be picked up by supervisors, so I want to make sure that I just acknowledge that they're picking that up so that we don't miss things for kids. But I just want to really say thank you to everybody who came to this, this challenge and recognized this, this budget season was very tough. As a lot of you know, we had to make a lot of difficult decisions. The goal next year for clubs would be for these to be in the budget and not supported by donors. Even though the donors are amazing, we have to get these back into the budget so that we can have, you know, these, these clubs running for children. And, and quite honestly, we'll monitor all the clubs this year for attendance and participation just to make sure that we have the clubs running that, that really are, that should be and need to be. I want to thank Mr. Anderson for doing all his hard work, and he also enlisted Angela Castello to help him. Obviously, I want to thank all the donors. For those that are not anonymous, we're gonna recognize them at a board meeting. Some wish to remain behind, behind the curtain, so to speak. And I also want to give a massive shout-out to Gretchen Gerber. I wasn't here to, to acknowledge when she became Assistant Superintendent, so we're gonna clap for her too, because she's amazing. Annette Miller made that recommendation, but I 100% would've made it. I want to be very clear, Gretchen, you are amazing. Gretchen is a problem solver. If you don't know Gretchen, she can really get to the heart of anything. She's one of the most organized and thoughtful people I've ever met. She will do exceptionally well in this role and already has. And when we went to Gretchen and said, "Listen, what can we do for elementary?", she, she solved the problem. So, coming back at elementary will be strategic games, future acts, STEM, and the Green Club, okay? All of which are going to run. So, big hand for Gretchen. That's at every, at every building they will run. And please note that the Safety Club and the Drama Club were never cut. Now, in full transparency, and you're not allowed to yell at me for that, the Newspaper Club will not be running. Please do not stand up and tell me that the Newspaper Club needs to run. We did the very best we could with all that we had. So, all of this is great things for kids, which is what we really need to focus on and celebrate, which is at the heart of everything that we should do. So, it's good to be back, and it's good to be able to say some positive things that the Board, our incredible community administrators and staff put into play. Alright, so we started with some, some good things right out of the bat. Sir.
Alright, thank you. School and Community Relations Director Distillio.
Thank you, Mr. Sorano. I have a couple of announcements. First, just a thank you to all those who worked tirelessly over the summer. As the summer draws to a close and the new school year begins, it's a perfect time to recognize and celebrate the incredible efforts of many. A huge shout-out goes to every individual who was dedicated, who has dedicated their time and energy over the summer to prepare the schools for the students and the staff. This includes some teachers, assistants, secretaries, administrative supervisors, custodians, and all other personnel at both the building and central levels. They worked tirelessly over the summer, putting in long hours to ensure every classroom hallway and building was ready to go. So, I just wanted to appreciate everybody's commitment. The Washington Township Education Foundation, or the WTEF, extends its deepest gratitude to all those who contributed to the immense success of the 28th Annual WTEF Golf Classic, which was held on August 9th at White Oaks Country Club in Newfield. The event was a testament to the community's unwavering support of local education, and a heartfelt thank you goes out to all the generous donors, dedicated community members, supportive schools, and our Board of Education members who contribute, whose contributions and participation were vital to making this year's event a memorable and impactful one. So, just so everybody knows, the success of events like this, particularly the Golf Classic, allows the WTEF to continue its mission to enhancing educational opportunities for students and staff. Over the past 28 years, the WTEF has proudly donated more than $1.1 million to support various initiatives, including multicultural programs, Renaissance programs, art galleries, dance studios, and campus greenhouses. The foundation also plays a crucial role in the community through its hoagie sale and by issuing mini-grants that enable teachers to create a robust and innovative classroom environment and programming. The WTEF is incredibly proud of the community's collective effort to give back and enrich the lives of our Washington Township students and the staff. And just so everybody knows, this past golf outing, thanks to everybody's effort, netted $26,080. So, thank you very much. As far as the start of the school year goes, the annual update forms for those families and parents in the audience, to view your child's schedule, bus information, and other details, you must complete three forms for each child. That includes your annual information form, the school counseling and informed consent form, and the 2025-26 health information form. For high school students, the sports participation form is only required if they are playing a sport. And if you have trouble logging in, you can use the "Forget My Password" link, and remember that your username is your full email address. Schedules for Washington Township 9th graders will be available tomorrow, and while schedules for other students and bus information will be released on or around August 25th, but you need to make sure you complete your annual update to be able to see those. A new feature has been added to Genesis, which is an attendance tab, so families know about this. It's a notify in office tab and pickup tab. So, what you can do is to help streamline communication regarding absences, tardies, and early dismissals. A parent can click that notify office or pickup tab, and you can upload the requisite paperwork there as well if you had a doctor's appointment or such. So, the new 2025-26 Parent Handbook is also available for review. And on August 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00 at Central Office, by appointment only, my department, along with some tech assistants, will be there for families to help log in if they are having trouble, and will help them with Parents Square as well. We have a full list so far, so there might be more information coming out to extend more opportunities. Thank you, that's my report, Mr. Sorano.
Thank you, sir. Old business? So, on here, we have Board Goals Update. I'm gonna leave that to Ms. Cozempel to do next week, when she comes back. So, is there any other old business for the Board of Education members at this time? Mrs. Baker?
Yes, I just want to speak, you know, on behalf of myself, I'm not speaking for any other board member, I want to take a, a moment to express my gratitude as a board member to Annette Miller for her hard work and leadership that she's, she demonstrated during her brief tenure as Acting Superintendent. She worked tirelessly and was very, very helpful in a lot of ways, and I want to personally thank her.
I have, I have a couple of things, yes. I just wanted the public to know that for next year, we talked about in IA that we didn't know which clubs were cut this year. We all agree that that's something that we would like to know. And Mrs. Gerber and Ms. Dr. Hibbs will help us make sure that we know that information next year. And again, for transparency, we never really received information saying that we had gotten the tax levy this year. And I can even remember, Scott, that you wanted to get rid of the MOA. We were gonna table it because we didn't know. So, as a board, it was nobody's fault, but you need to know that we were not really ever made aware of that. I actually got my tax bill. That's how I was made aware of the fact that the tax levy had gone through. I'm not sure why the state decided to do it that way, but for transparency, that's how it happened this year.
Right, so the state did not formally approve our tax levying incentive application until August 1st. That's when we got notification.
Alright.
Just real quick, I just want to thank the freshman transition teachers and peer counselors. I think they did a phenomenal job. I heard from my own incoming freshman, and actually several, the kids coming out, they came out super high-energy and excited to start. I think they had a great experience with not only the teachers that were there that facilitated, but the peer counselors. I saw, I think, a few TikToks out there. I just think that it looked like the spirit coming out was really like energized and fun, and I just want to thank those that did, the peer counselors and the counselors that were there. I think it was awesome, so thank you.
Alright, thank you. Motion to open to the public.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, do you have any cards? Patty Sukalas.
Very good on that pronunciation. Alright, so Patty Sukalas, WTEA Vice President of the High School. I'm also the co-curricular Chair for the Teacher's Union. So, good evening, members of the Board and community members. I was not able to attend the July meeting, but I did, was able to watch it later online, and I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to share some important context and concerns regarding the co-curricular programs in my role as the Chair of Co-Curricular. First, I want to briefly clarify a point that Connie raised at the July meeting about the year when the two drama directors were funded. That was made possible by redirecting funds from the Renaissance Advisor Program. This was intended to be a one-year solution, but the Renaissance Program has never returned. For those unfamiliar with that program, it was a club at the high school that recognized students with strong grades, attendance, and conduct. It was a great positive motivator for many students. So, it was put on hold for one year, and then it was never reinstated. So, that's where the money came from that, and the drama teacher retired the following year. So, just so you're aware of, that's what happened with that situation. Second, there seems to be some confusion about what was and wasn't communicated during the budget presentation. Carol was correct that the budget presentation did reference co-curricular cuts. However, no specific clubs or positions were named. In contrast, sports like the gymnastics, golf, and diving were clearly mentioned. As a result, those communities showed up to advocate for their programs, and they succeeded. If specific clubs had been listed at the time, we may have had a similar response in their defense. So, that is what happened, because I pay attention to all the co-curricular. Understanding the cuts were coming, I began to reach out to Mr. Sweeney in June to ask for a list of affected clubs. Unfortunately, even by late July, we still don't have finalized answers. When Mr. Anderson emailed the staff, because I work at the high school, on July 24th to announce the open co-curricular positions, I started getting calls and texts from concerned members that their clubs weren't appearing there. They weren't listed. So, I followed up that night and received a response from Mr. Anderson stating that the list was still not finalized, but that most of the active positions had been already posted. This isn't the first time we've been experiencing uncertainty. Last year, if you remember, when the Green Club and Newspaper Clubs at the elementary level were not posted, I started asking questions in September. I didn't receive a final answer until December that the two clubs were not running, and in February is when we learned that the stipends had been reallocated to support the middle school drama. It took nearly half a year to get clarity, which is why I started asking questions early this summer. Look, I understand that these are difficult decisions. I don't envy anyone in the administration's position that has to make these, but there definitely has to be a better process. When advisors don't know if their clubs still exist, they lose the chance to apply for other co-curricular roles. Mr. Anderson said that he doesn't consider these cuts, but in multiple cases, once a position is removed from the budget, it likely doesn't return. That's just the reality of it. And, you know, on a side note, I was gonna say about the Green Club, it was reposted just today, which I'm glad to see that one come back, because that was a great program that, you know, my three children were involved in. And that's a very welcome development from the district. I also want to take a moment to sincerely thank the individuals and businesses who made donations to support our high school clubs. Their generosity has made it possible for additional clubs to run this year, and it's deeply appreciated. I hope we can find a way to reinstate all the co-curricular positions in next year's budget so we don't have to rely on donations to provide these vital enrichment opportunities. Finally, while we still don't have a final or official list, I do have a number of clubs that I have not seen posted or board-approved. I'm happy to share that with anyone, if you'd like to see the list later after the meeting, if that's helpful. So, you know, again, thank you for your time. I know this budget has been a nightmare, and I know, you know, cuts have to come somewhere, and we hate to see it come from the kids. So, I'm glad to see that most of this co-curricular has come back, but I just wanted to offer some clarity, because I do follow all of this. I have a whole list, and I highlight every time a position is posted, every time that it's board-approved, so that way I can keep track of that as well. So, if you ever have any questions about that, you can always reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Go ahead, Dr. Hibbs first.
Yeah, Patty, happy to, happy to try to communicate in a, in a faster fashion for you moving forward. I wasn't, I'm gonna say this one time only, I wasn't here to be able to do that. So, I'm happy to do that moving forward. And then, the goal for next year is to definitely have these in the budget. I'm not sure where Patty went, my progressive lenses are struggling. There you are, thank you. So, we're happy to try to, to understand that people rely on this. I think it was just a lot of moving parts.
Alright, Ms. Baker, then Ms. Hart, Ms. Hart, Tom.
Patty, thank you for the offer, and I would like to see that list.
Patty, if you could send that list to me also, that would be great, thank you.
Is it full board, want to have access to it? Okay.
Yeah, that would be good for all of us to see, thank you.
Okay.
Patty, send it to me, I'll, I'll send it to the full board.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen Ducas.
Good evening, Shereen Ducas, WTEA Middle School Exec Member. I wanted to begin by saying that I was surprised and truly surprised to see that the district is considering hiring an Assistant BA at a salary of about $130,000. The average salary for an Assistant School Business Administrator in Gloucester County is about $69,000 for the state of New Jersey. Even with the top earners making about $107,000. Yet, here we are, proposing to start someone off at $130,000, well above the average and the high end of the range. And I have to ask, aren't we in the middle of a budget crisis? We still have unsettled contracts for teachers, principals, and supervisors, the very people responsible for the education and success of our students. Yet, somehow, we are ready to hand out a six-figure salary at the very highest end of the scale for someone new. Yes, I understand the argument that we may need fresh eyes on our finances, but let's be clear, throwing money at the problem is not the solution. Fiscal responsibility means making careful choices, not spending our way out of mistakes. The reality is this, we are now going to be paying over $250,000 to people tasked with getting us out of this financial situation, while at the same time, health benefits have been cut from our support staff. Foreign language has been eliminated at the sixth grade level. Tiered support is almost nonexistent. And both math and ELA interventionist positions have been wiped out. Teachers are being split between two and sometimes three schools to cover shortages. Positions are disappearing after retirements, and many teachers are being asked or forced to take on more than one subject or grade level. We've been tightening our belts, making sacrifices, and doing more with less. Don't let those sacrifices be for nothing when the savings we worked so hard to create are allowed to go right back out the door without being spent wisely. If the ship has drifted off course, the answer isn't to pour more money into the same approach. It's to take a hard look at how it's being steered and by whom. This Board has an obligation to make smart, responsible decisions that put staff, students, and classrooms first, not oversized salaries that deepen mistrust in how finances are managed. I urge the Board to pause, rethink this hire, and focus on solutions that strengthen our schools rather than reward the very mistakes that brought us here. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Shereen. Alright, let me, I think that part of, you know, part of the, and I'm not sure who that was directed to at times, but I just, I want to state for the record just very clearly, the budget issues that existed here, and you don't have to believe me, but facts are facts. Facts are facts, you can't argue with them. You can feel a certain way about me if you'd like, that's okay. But, don't, don't feel a certain way about, you have, you have to understand that facts are facts. The budget issues that we had predated, you know, myself and Janine. S2 is a real thing. So, you can go back in time, years and years and years. We have relied upon surplus time and time again. And, and I talked about this publicly two years prior. I talked, I would've talked about it again this year. You know, the steering of the ship, you know, we can make recommendations, that's all, that's all we can do at times. So, recommendations are recommendations. So, this, this position, and, and it seems as if that a lot of times, the positions that are being eliminated through attrition now, a lot of them, you know, across the board, we had a hard budget. There was numerous admin cuts that happened, that happened this year, and we absorbed everything. This one just isn't one of those positions that can be absorbed and have us be successful. The business office needs support, period. HR, we had a conversation about, and my intention with Human Resources is to downgrade that position, which we are going to do, which will save the district thousands and thousands of dollars. So, but this one is not one that we can, that we can do without. We're, we're, quite frankly, we've been down a person for a long time, and the struggle is real. And Janine lost numerous people from the business office. So, you mentioned careful choices, I agree. Careful choices need to be made, for sure. This one is not a, a ridiculous spend. I also, I don't know what facts you used, but I, I would bet that there's not many Assistant BAs in Gloucester County or at all that are making $69,000. I'm not sure if you, you chatted that, but, you know, sometimes it'll pull in different, different people to tell you that that's, that was an Assistant Business Administrator. If you have that data, I'd love to see it, and if I'm wrong, I'll be happy to say so. But $69,000 doesn't seem, doesn't seem like it, it would, it would fit. We needed to get someone that had qualifications. We had very little people put in for this position, and without it, we just do not think that all the functions of the business office, which includes, you know, benefits and coordination of payment of salaries, we have concerns. Janine, you want to add anything else?
No, other than just to point out that it is a budgeted position, and it was a longtime position that we've had for many years and had the support, and that the salary is in line with what was budgeted.
Alright, Chrissy Kozar?
Good evening, Board Members, members of the public. My name is Chrissy Kozar. I am currently the-
I am currently the county president for the Education Association in Gloucester. But tonight, I'd like to take a moment of point of personal privilege. Mrs. Angela Teruso is retiring and leaving the district. I've worked with Angela for many years. She has been a gem in our autism program, literally helped write the, write the programs that the students work by. Angela's commitment and professionalism is seen in the lives of the children that she's had in her care, and I've had the privilege to, and the opportunity to work with her. And as Washington Township President, she has worked tirelessly to settle the latest contract and is continuing to try and save or secure a reinstatement of benefits for our 20-year-plus dedicated support staff. She never stops working. If I try and phone her, she's usually on the phone busy talking to somebody else, or she's calling me and saying, "What do we do with this?" I admire your resilience, Angela. I hope I can fill this position with the same fortitude that you have done over the years. And as Dr. Hibbs mentioned, he hopes that next year, many of our clubs will be back in the budget. Let's see if we can't return our vital health benefits to our lowest-paid staff. That would be awesome, too. Angela, I'd like to say.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your comment. Angela Teruso.
So I'm a little emotional tonight, so please forgive me if I rattle on. I apologize ahead of time. I just want to say that, you know, as a union president, I don't just represent members. I represent everybody. I represent, whether you're a union member or not, I still represent you. I know that's probably hard to hear, but that, that is what happens. And before all of that, I represent the students, because you're the, the, the people who work with those students, that's what's important. That's firsthand what happens. And so the most important thing on my list right now is to reinstate the people who have been here for 20-plus years, who have dedicated their careers and really their entire livelihood here to serving the kids, whether they're serving them food, whether they're serving them in a classroom, it's all the same. It's all the same. It's one-to-one contact with these kids. And to take that away after 20-plus years is devastating. I have spent the entire summer consoling and trying to comfort so many of these people who are literally at the ends of their career and just trying to finish up, whether that means finishing up what's in their pension, finishing up getting benefits that they've worked so hard for for the rest of their lives. Many of you who are teachers benefit from that. You, you, you have a real benefit from that. You know, if you're a teacher that retired here after 25 years, you know exactly what that means. So at the very least, you should be very sympathetic to that cause because that's important. And for people who make, you know, and some of these people started out making probably $8 an hour. I know 17 years ago when I started here, I was making $9 an hour. And then I gave back a dollar an hour because there was no money in the budget. So we gave back a dollar an hour, and we did that because we wanted to help everything here, because we knew it was important. So I implore you, the way Mrs. Clancy implored the board to vote no on the MOA, I'm imploring you to please reinstate those nine people, reinstate their benefits. It's crucial to them. It matters. They need it. So that's the first part of that. The second part of that is, I don't know if you've counted up on the agenda, there are 43 support staff, well, this is part of your HR website, there are 43 support staff job openings, nine assistant resignations, and two retirements. I'm one of them. That's devastating to this district. I don't know how you're going to open in September, missing 43 people, and after night, after the 13 resignations today or whatever it was, and God knows what you're going to have next week. There's going to be more. Most of those people are coming from your autism program, from your MD program, the most critical programs we have here. That's where those people are coming from. That's critical. We need to have those people. We spent, you know, months negotiating and trying to figure out what to do to pay people more money, and we did that. And now I see on the agenda, number 49 and number 50, you are actually paying people above the step we just negotiated, and that blows my mind. It literally blows my mind. So I'm not really sure where that's all coming from, but it's absolutely a slap in the face after you take benefits away from 59 people. And now we get a raise, and all I've heard about in the community is the five-year MOA. They should come and work in these classrooms for five minutes. They would not last, not five minutes. These people deserve their money. You know it. They deserve this money. And to be constantly, we are not the enemies in the community, and we feel as though the support staff has been made the villains in this. We are not. We come to work every day, every single day, go above and beyond. Now you've cut 15 minutes, I don't know where you're going to put those 15 minutes back, how you're going to cover that is beyond me. So it's, it's going to be a problem, and I don't know how you'll stand compliance with all these job openings and the resignations, and there's more to come. So that's a problem. That's a real problem. The assistant BA position, I know some people already spoke on it. I'm not sure where the 132 comes from. I know it's more than the last person that was here. Maybe we should try to save money on other people and not just the support staff. If you want, you know, if you want to make that sacrifice, everybody should make that sacrifice. Not just the support staff. The other thing I wanted to say is, it has really been an honor for me to have worked here, even with all of this. It has been an honor. I will never forget my time here, from sitting up there to in the classroom to working with the adults that I've represented. So I walk away with a heart full of gratitude, and with every student that I ever worked with or touched, that's what I walk away with. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and congratulations again, Angela.
Angela, I just want to make a comment. My whole statement was not read. You know, I and I talked about the difference. The difference was not the contract, it was the five years. You know, I spoke to you about the three-year contract. The whole statement was not read, and I apologize for that because I couldn't be here. I would never have not supported the support staff. It was the five years that I was concerned because of the budget crisis. So my apologies for the misunderstanding, and you can feel the way you do about me, that's okay, but that's where I stand. What I had said to you and talked to you, you know, one-on-one, I still had that same feeling. The whole statement was not read. Thank you.
Heather Wickruff.
Hi, Heather Wickruff. First, I want to thank the board, Mr. Anderson in particular, members in the community for the steps taken to bring back numerous student clubs for the upcoming year. This effort will have meaningful impact, as many of our students will truly benefit from having these opportunities available throughout the 2025-26 school year. That said, I do want to ask for further clarification. What is the overall status of clubs and activities across the district? Are there any that remain on the chopping block, have already been cut, or are in danger of being cut? If so, will the board provide guidance or options, whether that means additional funding, sponsorships, or other support, so parents and community members can have a chance to help keep them alive? Our students thrive when they have access to diverse extracurriculars and transparency in this process matters. I also have a couple of direct questions for Dr. Hibbs. So if the March 18th assertion of necessity was so easily overturned, why was that not the first course of action advised by your legal counsel rather than pursuing a separate lawsuit against district? Now that this event has essentially not occurred, do you still intend to continue with that lawsuit, or is your intention to withdraw it? Another concern I'd like to raise, why are middle school and elementary school parents unable to view past report cards in Genesis? This seems like a simple but important issue for families, and I would appreciate an explanation and hopefully a solution. In addition, why are we hiring a new assistant business administrator who is yet again being paid substantially more than a previous employee with the same title and responsibilities, especially when we are supposedly struggling to provide funding for clubs, activities, sports, and even 15 minutes a day for employees who have dedicated 20-plus years of service to our children? This pattern raises serious questions of fiscal responsibility and fairness that the community deserves answers to. I'm also wondering if there's been any discussion regarding the literature I gave the board a few months back on teen dating violence. I had handed it to Elaine to pass down the line. It was titled, "Teen Dating Violence in LGBTQIA+: A Resource to Support Judges and Other Professionals Interacting with Teen Victims and Offenders." This resource offers practical support and recommendations for responding to teen dating violence, bullying, and abuse, particularly in LGBTQIA+ relationships. It also includes referrals to national organizations that can assist. I had requested that the board or whatever responsible parties to consider sharing this with staff over the summer, with the hopes that we can begin implementing stronger supports by fall. Lastly, as with previous election cycles, I want to let the board and the community know that Pi will be sending out candidate surveys to all the board candidates. This will be finalized and emailed by Monday night. I strongly encourage candidates to take it seriously, as responsibly, as responses will be made available to our group members and shared with others in the community. In addition, please watch for an invitation to our Meet the Candidates Roundtable event slated for October. This event has traditionally been well-received by both candidates and community members who value the format and the chance to engage directly. Candidate participation in both the survey and event is greatly appreciated and strongly encouraged. At the end of the day, our kids deserve better, and it's our responsibility as parents, educators, and leaders to make sure they get it. Thank you for your time and for addressing these important matters.
Thank you for your comment, Heather. Dr. Hibbs?
Heather, the second, the second one about the, was it report cards in Genesis? Is that your question?
Yeah, I can get that high school, but not middle or elementary.
Mike?
Yeah, I'll look into it. I wonder if it's a permission thing or whatever. But I'll talk to Justin tomorrow. We got it.
All right. He's got you on that one. I can't comment on, on anything that is a legal matter. The assistant BA, I've already addressed, there's a huge need in this district. We have worries that we will not just be compliant with all the fiscal responsibilities, and I think we addressed that one. The teen dating violence, Jen, I'll punt that one to you. You don't need to answer now, just, we can check into that one. And thank you for letting everybody know about the election surveys.
Just real quick, point of clarification in terms of, is there a way, because you there's been some discussion around middle school activities. I just, I guess I have a question about the donation process and how that works. Are we opening that up as well? Like, can we do that to the middle school clubs or anything in general? I just don't, I guess I'm just not, I don't have a good grasp. I know Mr. Anderson and Ms. Costello have been leading the charge at the high school, but in terms of like middle and elementary, do we have a process if someone decides that they want to lead that initiative at those levels? Do we have a process outlined or no?
So it's not the leading, it's the donation. I think we're still trying to, that's going to go to staff members with the donation. I don't think anything has gone out middle school-related. Mike, do you know any answer? So I don't, I don't know that it has been. We can regroup on that and see. But there was still, I mean, I know there were still activities available, but I know that we had cuts obviously as well. But we can regroup on that, on that question for you.
Okay.
All right. Tom Modassaro.
Thank you. You know, Dr. Hibbs said it earlier, you can like him, you cannot like him. To not acknowledge that he's returned, I think is a mistake from this board. Nobody would want to go through what he went through. If a judge orders you back, that means the people who put you out did something wrong. And for you guys to not acknowledge your mistake, welcome back, Dr. Hibbs. It should have been said a long time ago. And again, that, it doesn't matter whether you like him or not, nobody should be forced out of a job illegally, and that's what happened. Dr. Hibbs, you talked about facts, and a little bit further, we have used, not this, this budget, we had no reserves to use anymore, but the, at least, seven budgets prior, we used about $70 million of reserves. For people out here, that's like you use your bank account savings to pay your bills. You're not using your job, you're using their savings. That's what we did for seven years. People came up here, I don't think it's anybody in this room, and lied when they said, "We didn't have a budget problem prior to Dr. Hibbs and Janine's arrival." That was a complete lie. It's not a fact. I appreciate, you know, all the, the people who stepped up and donated to, to help, you know, focus on our kids. Problem is, the people up here are the ones, you know, Mrs. Baker always walks out when I'm talking. It's, because I'm going to talk about her.
We're not, we're not singling out board members.
I didn't.
But you're going to address the board. We're not singling out.
It's a fair comment.
Dress me.
So the MOA, I don't begrudge an MOA getting done. I would have focused on the people who lost their benefits. That's something we never, you want to do, because that, that's what gets people to leave when they see people treated like that. I'd rather cut a job than cut somebody's benefits. But that MOA was done on March 7th. How? Before we had a budget done, before we knew we had to cut sports, before we knew we had to cut clubs. I've said before that we focus on adults at, you know, the faction of the board here, and that's what we've done. We didn't plan. What could we have done better? What could we have done for the kids? March 7th, was administration involved, Dr. Hibbs? I've heard they weren't. I've heard it was 13%. Could we have worked together to figure out how to focus on the kids, how to not lose benefits? We threw a lot of money at things without information, according to Mrs. Chilla, but people are still leaving. And I said this before, throwing money at things, and somebody else said that, too, that doesn't solve the problem. Okay? All we're doing is creating more problems into the future. Dr. Hibbs, I hope that one of the things you will do is you'll have Ms. Wechter do a five-year plan. There was an article in The Inquirer about the Philly schools doing that. They use surplus in one year, and in five years, there's going to be $3 billion in deficit. Where are we going to be in five years? I think that would be very enlightening for this entire board, for the community, to understand, because everything we're going through this year, we're going to go through again next year. We said that last year. Everything we went through last year, we went through this year. We need a plan, and to start a plan, you need the big picture. You need to know what's going to happen next year, the year after, the year after, just with what we have. We could lose more money, but the real impacts are going to be coming when we cut direct educators. Everything should be equal in here. But, you know, support staff, I feel bad when I hear that they think they're, anybody thinks that they're a problem or they're evil. That is so far from the truth. They're the backbone of an organization. They really are. I know the teachers couldn't do without them, just like we couldn't where I worked. We have to plan, and when we spend a bunch of money without including the board and administration, this is where we're at today. So I hope we can do better.
Tom, what I just want to say is this to everybody. Tom is right on the fact that we've used a tremendous amount of money from reserves. I spoke about that earlier. One of my concerns is, and I'm not going to talk about anything else from, from Tom's, I'm just, for the record, you know, two years ago, we had about a 4% plus increase, correct? About 4% the year prior? Yeah. Yep. This year's upwards of 7. So, and I'm going to, I'm going to keep saying this because it's really super important. We have zero money in capital, zero. We're getting ready to go through an energy audit, which is going to get us millions of dollars in projects. We're waiting on, on a final, a final determination on solar, because it'll determine the scope of the project. Outside of that, we have absolutely no way of raising capital. So my fear for this district, quite frankly, and we will 100% do forecasts, you know, it's, it's hard not knowing the specifics of the year, but we're going to do the best we can to do like a three-to-five-year projection on where we are. The reality is, we were at four, then we were at 7, 739? 731? 713. At some point, without any money in capital, the only way to address our needs will be a referendum. So I just, I need everyone to understand that if we, the path that we're on leads to just devastation and destruction. And if you want to see a precursor of what we could be, it's Tom's River. And if you haven't taken a look at what happened in Tom's River, they tried to clean bankruptcy, and then the state forced them to do about a 12 and a half, I think, approximate percent raise, which is catastrophic. So there's no way to fix these things. I want to be very clear, that's, that ship has sailed. There is no way to get money into capital. We are living paycheck to paycheck right now, and that's why these conversations are really important. But even though we're living paycheck to paycheck... But even though we're living paycheck to paycheck, we still need necessary positions, because we won't survive without them as well. So, I just want to be clear about that piece, and that's my fear. And we're going to have that forecast, and we're going to talk about it through the Board and committees, and then we're going to talk about it with the public.
Jerry Taurasi?
Thank you, and I want to start off by congratulating Angela for a job well done, I might add. Much of what I planned on talking about was kind of pulled out from under me. The reinstatement of the pay-to-play, as an example. Glad to see that return. One part of that whole scenario included, I believe, charging admission for certain sports. Is that still on the table? If it is, has it been determined how much the students and adults would be charged? Where is that money going to be going? Would it be going to the individual sport, or would it be going to the general fund? I would also like to ask the following. Considering all the cuts, whether it be club programs, support staff, teachers, I keep hearing statements about a five-year plan now. We can't raise capital. I believe Mr. La Liberty and myself, at one point a couple of months ago, may have even suggested, "Why not sell this building?" And through the sale of this building, we could probably build enough revenue to fill that reserve. We could take the central administrative positions, put them in one of the existing buildings that we already have, perhaps the high school IMC, which is rarely being used now. So, there are alternatives where monies can be raised. And then ultimately, when it's all said and done, the statement that was made by Shereen in regard to the Assistant B.A. position and the money, it wasn't the question she was raising about the position. It was the amount of money that's being allocated for the position. It doesn't have to be $132,000. It could be $100,000. It could be $95,000. And the bulk of the remaining money that you're allocating for that position could be used to reinstate the 15 minutes for the people who have lost their benefits. So, let me help make sure that everybody understands, it wasn't an attack against the position. If Janine needs that kind of assistance, so be it. But does it have to be an assistant that's worth $132,000? I doubt it. All that being said, there are ways to correct what's been happening in this district, and in my many, many years of being here, I don't see it being corrected. And yes, we still have contracts that have not been finalized, have not been negotiated to their conclusion. With all that being said, I think we're still in a bad way, and it needs to be corrected as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taurasi.
I can't claim credit for the comment about the selling of the building. It wasn't me. I mean, it's been discussed in Business Committee. Actually, my suggestion was to look at leasing a building, because then you have a recurring revenue stream, rather than a one-time capital infusion of the sale. But, you know, that's something that we'd have to, the district and Administration would have to look at closely as to the needs we have with buildings.
Yes. Good point, Scott. So, the proceeds from the sale, I think we discussed this in Business Committee, would be a one-time infusion? You're absolutely right. What wouldn't be a one-time infusion is the overhead costs associated with maintaining this building, the custodial staff, the light bill, the water bill, and everything that comes along with maintaining a building of this size, square footage, et cetera. So, that's where we save the money. Go ahead, Connie.
I'm not on the Business Committee, but I did sit in on Business Committee several months ago where this came up, and I just wondered, is there an update? Because my understanding at the time, someone was going to be looking into this. Any update on that?
I did ask about this in committee. Can we wait till I get to the committee update to answer that question? All right. I appreciate it. Were you going to say something? All right. Brandy Williams?
Hello. Welcome back. I'm so excited to have a superintendent starting off the school year. First, I want to give a shout-out to Principal Hulk at Herfield. I don't know if anybody has seen, but her spending her entire summer, it's her first year, she hasn't even been with us a whole year. I believe you were responsible for hiring her. And she's spent her whole summer with her dad and some of our maintenance guys, power-washing the school, painting the school, and just putting tons and tons of work and effort and love into that school. And I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that, because that's wonderful. And that's what we need. We need good teachers like that, and we need to pay our teachers and take care of our teachers, so we don't lose them. Same thing with support staff. I wanted to ask a question regarding the building lease, this building. So, or, Grenlock gets an amount of money each year for the program, correct? Could we actually lease it to them, and then we would take that money from the money we get from the state, and turn this into a childcare facility, rather than paying Pittman and all these other facilities? Is that something that could be done? Is that considered double-dipping? I don't know. Okay, I know, but, all right. So, that's one of my questions, is if could we use money from the childcare program, put it back into our township, rather than paying all these other buildings? I also want to ask an update on the solar. I've been driving by other schools, and I see a lot of them have the awnings over the parking lots with solars. Something that we can do, possibly save money. And now, my last is, January is fastly approaching. Or have you guys been discussing the budget? There's, you guys approved the budget, we don't have any plan, we don't know, taxes are going up, but nothing's changed. Have you guys been meeting? Have you been talking about it? What is the plan for the next couple of months? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And Gretchen, you can feel free to jump in here. Brandy, part of the problem with PEA is that you need square footage. This building is oddly weird, so that you would need, it's about 750 square feet, right? And then you also need to either be in line of sight with the bathroom, or you have to have a bathroom in there. That makes this building really tough for that. And what you would do is, you would probably create a couple classrooms in here that you could do, but that's really it. So, you'd have like a standalone building with a couple, which is why we saw Kindle as such a massive opportunity. Gretchen, you want to jump in?
Just want to add, too, they did change the square footage requirements, which is better. However, the PEA funds are not allowable to do anything that would require a permit. So, to create these walls, and they will really only like lower bathroom toilets, lower sinks, minor renovations, anything that falls under that category. So, this would be a major renovation. They will not allow that funding to occur, or for any building or construction.
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
And I think that, you know, I don't want to steal Mrs. Taurasi's, she's going to talk about it in Business. Solar, just very quickly, you know, in the energy audit, we know right now that Bunker Hill and Grenlock are off the table for solar. Grenlock's, the roof was, you know, just not, was not conducive to the solar, and Bunker was going to push the grid, off the grid, pun intended. So, it's just way too expensive to do that. So, we are waiting on the rest of the applications now from Atlantic City Electric. I don't know if you know this, but the, you know, with the President having the new bill, solar now has a time crunch on it. So, I think what I'm told is that there's been a lot of applications across the Board. So, we're trying to navigate that carefully, but the reality is, it could be the difference between a $12 million worth of projects versus a $20 million worth of projects, depending on how solar lands. So, as we know, the Board will know, will filter through, you'll know which projects we're looking at doing. It's, you know, a lot of energy-saving stuff, you know, that would also include unit ventilators and boilers, chillers, things of that nature.
Can I add about the parking lot one? That was a question that I asked when the gentleman came to speak to us. And what that entails is drilling into the concrete and making sure it supports it, which is more costly, and that's why that was not one of the ones that he suggested, because I did ask that.
All right. Nicole LaNudi?
Just to, I add an extra note here. After Scott said something about it being leased, Mr. Serrano, you said something about having to pay utilities and custodians. If the building was leased, I would assume that would be on the tenant to pay their own utilities and not, we don't need custodians, because if we rented out the building, it would be whoever was leasing the building, for that to be their responsibility. And like Scott said, it's steady revenue, where if we ever did need this building again, because now our student population went up, where they don't fit in those buildings anymore, at least we still have it as a future asset. But I think renting it out while our student population is down, moving everybody here out, and then bringing them back if necessary, could really be a good financial move. That was just a side note. A couple meetings back, when we were, when everybody voted on De Novi, and it got voted down, and then there was an interjection, and then it got voted back, the discussion at that meeting was that, I don't know if it was supposed to be at the retreat or somewhere, it was going to be discussed and weighed. Did that conversation ever happen? What was the outcome of that conversation? Did anybody weigh the cost of what we are paying De Novi? I know Ms. Miller said it wasn't $3 million, but I did revert back to a couple meetings, I think it was last year, where the total came out that it was 3-point-something million. Did anybody weigh the cost of what it would be to have on-staff RBTs, BCBA's, people like Jeff Bevin, who's amazing? Why do we not have more of him? Even if he was a, trained them, I don't know. But that conversation was supposed to happen at this retreat. Was curious to know if that happened. I also went back to last year's budget, and for the '24-'25 school year, $3,144,174.40 was spent on out-of-district placement for less than 30 students. $1,436 was paid to one-to-one aides for one school year, not working here. So, between the $3 million we paid De Novi and the $3 million we paid, that's $6 million going to not our staff, for our special ed kids. Has anybody looked into, and I'm assuming if these kids went out-of-district last year for this $3 million, they're also out-of-district this year. There was 15 multiple disability children on that list. We have a phenomenal M.D. staff here. There is no word to describe the people that work in our M.D. program. I don't want to hear that they can't handle them. There are kids that can't thrive in this district, 1,000%. But there's no way that all of those kids can't thrive in this district. Those parents are taking their kids out of district because of issues they're having here. Has anybody ever looked into seeing if they are solvable issues? I was told that an M.D. teacher that left, the job wasn't replaced because there's no M.D. kindergarteners coming in. Is that accurate, that this township has no five-year-olds that qualify for M.D., or are they being misplaced? Are they being placed out-of-district, or are they being placed in programs that they don't belong in? Somebody has to look into that, and I really wish Ms. Miller was here. But for the $3 million that these children are being out-of-district, can somebody look in to see if we can handle them here and bring them back into district, and maybe put that money into saving the benefits? I'm assuming that these people are going out-of-district, because if my kid needed a one-to-one all day long, if her aide was taken away from her for 15 minutes, she's out. My kid can't survive for 15 minutes. So, maybe these kids are out-of-district, because they don't have an aide full day, and you're out of compliance, and you can't fulfill their IEP. Those aides, some of the aides got approved for $45,000. These aides don't make $45,000, it's double what you're paying them. If you bring back their benefits, wouldn't it save you money to not pay $88,000 tuition plus $45,000 for their one-to-one, plus their busing? You're paying for eight students, each $107,000 a year, plus busing, to go out-of-district. Can somebody please look into that to see if you can bring them back, and that money can reinstate their benefits? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. LaNudi.
I know that's a conversation point all year. I'll touch base with Mrs. Miller and have that conversation, for sure.
Motion to close to the public?
Close to.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Committee discussions. We will start with instructional affairs. Mrs. Blom?
Yeah. We met on August 11th. It was myself, Mrs. Clancy, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Grimaldi, Mrs. Hartog, Ms. Gesempel, Dr. Hibbs, and Mrs. Miller. We talked about professional development plan, and the staff will work on mastery of key digital tools. The staff will work on strengthening instructional practices by using data-driven strategies in the classroom to increase student learning success. The Danielson framework will be used in classrooms to enhance instruction strategies, as well as used as an observational tool during staff observations. The 2025 through 2026 mentoring program was reviewed. We do that every year for new staff. They get paired up with a teacher who has been there for a while, and they work together throughout the first year of their teaching experience here. That's going to start with, I think, a breakfast on August 21st. That's the first time that they'll meet, and that program will be ongoing throughout the year. We talked about courses of study for 2025 through 2026 school year. We talked about in relationship to some of the changes. Specifics in discussion included grade five health. There are some changes there, because there's no longer a DARE program going on, but our health and physical education teacher will be working with the students on some of the goals that DARE had. Also, the sixth grade, How to Succeed, and Financial Leadership course has been renamed Academic and Financial Readiness. Several new high school science courses have also been developed. The final course of study guide will be submitted to the Board for approval. Is that tonight, Mrs. Gerber? Yes. We talked about tiered support, which someone had talked about in the ELA and Math Max. That's where we discussed it. There are elementary plans for providing support to students in math and ELA. Support will include the use of in-person and digital supports. They will collect data, which will help to determine what kind of help is needed by each student on an individual basis. There is a grading update. Mrs. Gerber ran a meeting with 20 upper teachers in grade six through 12. The grading system has been revised for the 2025-2026 school year. That was going to go out to the teachers, and I guess at one point, Mrs. Gerber will go out to the public, so that they'll see it, too. Special areas in the elementary schools was discussed. They're going to be going to an A-through-E schedule this school year to reduce the number of classes that are missed on holidays and on Mondays and Fridays. So, that will be a change. I think library books may be an issue with that, but other than that, hopefully, it will go smoothly. And maybe sneakers on gym day, I'm not sure about that either. The committee will meet again in September.
Thank you, Mrs. Blom. I'm going to go a little bit out of order here. I do Business Committee last, since that's my committee. Student activities and communications? Student activities and communications?
That's my new committee. We met on 8/11. It was myself, Julie, Carol, Pat, Dr. Hibbs, Mrs. Miller, Ms. Wector, Mrs. Gerber, and Mr. Distillio. A lot of the stuffs Dr. Hibbs already had spoken about, using Genesis to track club attendance for future decisions on clubs that we keep versus clubs that we don't. Next year, hoping to have clubs in the budget. Pay-to-play, we brought up pay-to-play at the middle school level. The model shows that it would not generate enough money for the funding for this school year. School attendance, we talked about changes to the regulation, clarifying reasons for unexcused absences. I know as a parent, sometimes the unexcused absences can sometimes be muddy water, so it'll be cleared up. Update of parent notifications and a corrective action plan for absenteeism for certain buildings. And we also talked about the sport ticket sales, which Mr. Trashy brought up. It's an, it'll be online only. There will be a vendor fee attached to each ticket, so kind of like when you buy something online, there's always a convenience fee. No amount of the tickets were discussed, and we also talked about maybe offering a discount slash free tickets for our senior citizens in our district. And that was it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hartog. Personnel?
The personnel committee met on August 12th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. In attendance was Dr. Hibbs, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Wector, Mr. Ross, Mrs. Chilla, myself, and Mrs. Gesempel. There were a myriad of personnel issues, including but not limited to areas such as pay-to-play, co-curricular, position changes, salary adjustments, HR, the HR position and the assistant BA position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. So yeah, business committee meeting, which was held on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Present in the meeting administrators were Dr. Hibbs, Mrs. Wector. Board members in the meeting were myself, Ms. Gesempel, Mr. Ross, and Mrs. Baker. First item of business we discussed was...
I wasn't there at that meeting.
My apologies. You're right, you weren't there. Sorry. Must have been a typo. Mrs. Baker was not there. So the first update we had was a solar project update. Approved the solar, we approved it in July. We had an initial project meeting to talk about the priorities per building, as Dr. Hibbs alluded to earlier today. The meeting scheduled for 8/14 is being rescheduled. We haven't heard back, so that was supposed to be rescheduled, has, well, has it been rescheduled, Janine?
No.
I have it in my notes.
No, we're still waiting on the solar.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, that meeting will happen. That meeting will happen when the solar comes in, either approved or not approved.
Okay. Understood. Upcoming purchasing items. So we're, tonight, we're seeking work session approval for lease purchase financing. So this bid is done for our annual lease financing. We work with our financial advisors on this, and we are approving Webster Bank at an interest rate of 3.64 percent, which again is going to be on the agenda tonight. Another item of business, seeking work session approval, 10-month school bus lease. This bid was done to get the best price on leasing six buses to cut down on the outsourced bus routes. This saves us money and allows us to give our bus drivers internally more hours. That is on the agenda again today. Next week, we had a bid opening for student transportation services for extracurricular activities, field trips, and sports, and that will be on next week's agenda. We have the light-speed stop-it grant. This is a safety program which will fund an anonymous reporting platform, and will get funded for the first two years, and after the two years, Janine, correct me if I'm wrong, we will have to cover those costs. That's correct? You can elaborate on...
I was just going to say, yes, we, we would have to cover the cost moving forward. We do get a safety grant through our insurance that we could use for it.
All right. Yes, sir.
I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Hilbert back there, who is our, in charge of security. He ran point with that. Mr. Distillio is also taking a huge role, so just wanted to give you guys a shout-out. Great job.
Temporary facilities approvals. So we have certain approvals we require every year, filing a form and inspection by the county office. This is an alternate method of compliance for our kindergarten toilets. If there's no bathroom in the classroom and students are using a gang bathroom, we need proper signage supervision, and there has to be clear line of sight into these bathrooms. So this is an annual thing, and it's something that we do routinely. So Connie, under this, I've wanted to talk about your, I'm sorry, Mrs. Baker, I wanted to talk about your request for selling Central. So I did discuss that with, with Dr. Hibbs, and we went through it at length at the end of the business committee meeting. So Dr. Hibbs, if you wanted to elaborate on some of your high-level talking points?
Yeah. So something we're definitely going to aggressively look at, remember, it's a one-time infusion, so we're unclear right now as to what would be more beneficial, a lease or a one-time infusion. I think we need answers to both. Either way, there is a good number of people in this building, and what I conveyed to Mr. Serrano in that meeting is that there's, we're going to need to figure out a way to keep a lot of us together, because to put us across separate buildings will really, will really not be productive. So the, you know, we have to flush it out and see where we land. There's, there's going to need to be space. Obviously, there's going to need to be some form of renovation, because there's just not existing offices that exist that we could just move right into, and we wouldn't want to do things like, at all, like displace counseling at the high school. You know, that's not something that we would ever consider. So we have to look across the district and see where, where we might best fit, and then figure out what, how much we could make on the one-time infusion versus what we could possibly make on, on a lease. And I think that's right now where we are, and Mr. Serrano asked that to be a priority, and I responded back, not a problem. We just needed to get out of our own way and get kids in the buildings, and then we can get on to that kind of stuff.
Does that, is that a question or comment on that, too?
Could we also consider potentially putting some money-making programs in here? Like expansion of some of the programs that you started last year that could start bringing some revenue, and space here potentially be allocated?
Yeah, so when I hear lease, there's, there's two things in my, two, two ways that could go, right? That would be, we, A, out-lease it to somebody where they have, you know, they run something here. The other option that wouldn't be a strict lease would be a money-maker venture, like, for instance, I'll use emotional support as an example. Could we, could we do something along those lines that could support children? So that all has to be factored into the equation. So really, it's, it's, it's kind of three things. Can we bring kids in? Can we charge tuition? Can you still hear me? Charge tuition. Could we out-lease it to, call it kinder care, but it could be whatever, and then what would the straight sale that you, or get you?
Go ahead, Mrs. Baker.
Dr. Hibbs, I have a follow-up question. I know you've been out, but I did send an email, and I just wondered if you can give me an idea of when I might get this information, or if I'm even going to be able to get this information. Since this building is being considered to maybe sell, I had asked how many employees are physically working in this building every day? Would I be able to get that information at some point?
Yeah.
Do you know, do you know when? It's been over a month.
I only started, I only started back a couple weeks ago, so this, this didn't really come to me.
No, no, but I, I followed it up with an email to let you know that, since you've been back.
I don't recall that email, but we're happy to pull it. I mean, it's no problem to pull the number of... Laura, can you just ask Sean tomorrow to send the entire board the, the list of employees here? Problem solved.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem. I know, it's been a lot going on. I'll be glad to, you know, give you that email. I think one of the items on the email, too, is an over request that I made back in early July that I had not received. So I'll, I'll get that email for you so that you can see the number of things that I've asked for. Thank you.
I'm going to keep going.
Steve, just real quick, just, sorry.
Let me finish our report.
What's your report again?
I just got business committee.
Okay.
Please.
Go ahead.
Okay. Say it again.
I just need clarification to set it up. They won't, or direct...
All right, can I finish my, let me finish this, and then whatever questions, comments we have, I'm going to lose my train of thought. We had an agreement with the Washington Township for the SLEOs, Special Law Enforcement Officers, and the SROs, fully sworn-in School Resource Officers. So we're working through some provisions in both, in those agreements, and we should be coming to a mutually agreeable resolution soon. Dr. Hibbs, can you confirm that is correct?
I'm sorry, I was writing it down. Was, in reference to...
The SLEOs and the SROs.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We should be coming to an agreement soon.
Yep. So board passed me with going back with having, yeah, no, we're good.
Some items.
We're good, yeah. Sorry. I'm sorry, sorry.
So pay-to-play, we did discuss that, and as, as you all can tell, is both on today's agenda. So we're going to have ongoing discussions about that throughout the year. Co-curricular activities, we had a discussion about the clubs that were cut and those that are being reinstated through donations, necessary hiring. And that concludes the report, but I just wanted to chime in on the, the selling of Central administration. I would prefer, the, the reason that I prefer to sell the building is, as I stated earlier, I do think that we could get a lot of money from leasing it, but we have revenue-generating accounts, enterprise accounts, I believe they're called, correct? That we have trouble generating revenue from. So I think we should maximize the revenue we bring in from those before we take on any, any more revenue-generating enterprise funds. I think we should, you know, become specialists, and we should master those accounts before we go ahead and add more onto our plate with the, with the, everything going on. Again, with the one-shot infusion, yes, the proceeds will be, but when you consider capex for long-range planning, when you consider, when you consider roofing projects, when you consider things that have to go out to bid, those take time, those take stat, those take hours, man-hours and woman-hours to develop and send out. So I'm more worried about the cost that we're going to be saving in productivity and long-range planning costs and capex over years versus leasing it. But if we can lease it and we can maximize that revenue stream, I'm all for it. So, along with all the other ones we already have. So, thank you, and I'm going to go first to Ms. Chilla, then to Mr. Ross, and I think someone else had a comment, so.
So this is just with regards to business committee, if this could be considered as a next-meeting agenda item. You just mentioned revenue-generating activities. So if you could maybe also add, talking about the RBPAC, it may be a long-term strategic plan to start increasing our revenue. I mean, we're always kind of chasing behind trying to fit things in the budget, but I think we do have some opportunities that I think maybe it would be worth discussing those long-range plans. I think there was that, the, the committee that was comprised of the public. There were some of those ideas brought forward in that committee that talked about revenue generation, and RBPAC, I feel like it's been talked about now several times. So if, if you can, Steve, if the board is amenable to it, just to kind of put that on as an item for discussion of who's going to lead that charge of revenue generation...
Yes, ma'am.
That would be amazing.
Thank you. I think, I believe Dr. Hibbs just whispered to me that he's sending an email to Ms. Wector right now, so we should be good to go. Mr. Ross, you had a comment?
Yeah, yes. Are we going to have an exit conference with, are we going to have an exit conference with the auditor?
I believe that is a requirement, so I will speak to Janine to get that scheduled. Janine, are we, are we good to have that within the next two to three weeks? So whenever, so she just answered, whenever we want to do it. So to answer your question, yes. Yes, we will. Mrs. Blom?
I had some things under new business, but they have to do with what we're talking about now. So when we're thinking about the new budget here, where they are already...
Yes.
So some of the concerns I had that I think would go with the budget committee was, of course, the selling of Central, the Performing Arts Center, the strategic planning that was talked about. We had the community group that kind of fell apart as far as giving suggestions. I was wondering if we could somehow think about having a new group formed that includes all the stakeholders, staff, community, not just business people. Especially, I would like to see that thought about. And I think we need to reassess at some point our three middle schools. There are some, a lot of empty areas of them, and from what I understand, our elementary schools are bursting, bursting because of all the programs. We brought back the full-day kindergarten, a lot of our special ed classes that were talked about are in there, and I just think we ought to think about how we could maybe redo our middle schools and maybe make room in the middle schools so that we have less people in the elementary schools. And then the enterprises that you talked about, from what I know, we have driver's ed, food service, and childcare. I don't know if we have any other ones, I wouldn't know about that, but I was wondering if we could go over, if business could go over monthly, if they're in the plus or the minus, so that we have an idea as board members throughout the year how these programs are doing. I think that would be helpful. And for example, the other thing I had is, I don't know if this is true or not, but I've heard that there's quite a bit of money, I won't say the amount, because I don't know for sure, that we have in unpaid lunches and breakfast money. We all like computers, we all like a card, but have we ever thought about, and this might sound crazy, going back to the old-fashioned punch card that you pay as you go along? You don't have an account, because these children are charging stuff, parents don't know it, and then all of a sudden, there's all this money. And it's not your free and reduced lunch people, it's other people. I just think that maybe, maybe technology isn't always the best way, and maybe you should have to pay ahead for those services. That was just another thought. But I just hope that the business committee, I'm sure you're going to start working on things for the budget, for this next budget year, and keep all of us informed, that would be very much appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. Will do. Do you have all of that, Janine? Okay. So next meeting, we will discuss the items that were presented to us here today. One more thing I wanted to add, last meeting, there was a resident who came up and said that the township has reached out to us multiple times about putting shows on at the RBPAC. I wanted to know if, if we could follow up with the township to see if there's a potential revenue-generating opportunity there.
Steve?
Ms. Hartog first, and then you, Ms. Baker.
Quick question. Have we gotten anywhere with renaming the RBPAC since it's no longer Republic Bank?
Yes, so I did talk to Janine about that. The last, I guess you could say, the, the last bookmark we put in the conversation was that she, we were going to work on the, redo revisions to the RFP, because as it stands, I spoke to a couple of individuals with the Gloucester County Chamber of Commerce just to see if any of those entities would be interested. The five-year commitment is something that they get hung up on, because they don't know if there's going to be a merger or acquisition specifically for a bank. There, there's a lot of movement with the banking system, so they weren't too sure about, you know, what, the five-year commitment, but we're going to rework the RFP to see if we can generate that revenue as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to follow up on Mrs. Blom's comment. I wasn't really aware of that about the lunch. I'm just wondering, Dr. Hibbs, do we, at the end of the year, actually have a figure of how many students' lunches have not been paid? I'm not talking about the free and reduced lunch. I know that we have 25 percent of our population, I don't know if the public's aware, or maybe even higher, a free and reduced lunch. So I'm just looking at, do we keep statistics on how much money we have not collected? Do you have, do you have the figure for this past year?
We, we do have that figure. I don't know it off the top of my head, so we can talk about it in the next business committee. You know, I can also talk about the policy that we have as far as students charging lunches. We are limited at what we can do in the moment, but we can, I can add that to the business committee for the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, and, and Dr. Hibbs, I just forwarded that email to you, August 14th, and I did have one there, Mr. Ross as well, wondering when we're going to have the exit interview with the booming company.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Moving on to...
I just had two things.
Okay.
So student activities, I think we already discussed, the ticket sales. Do we have a time estimate when we might have the amount that will be charged?
I honestly think it's five. Yeah, it's five. I honestly think it's five, yeah, it's five, three, isn't it? Yeah, I think it's, it's $5 and then $3. $5 for adults, $3 for kids. I think that's where we landed.
I also think that somebody asked about senior citizens. I know in the past, senior citizens have been free. I don't know if that's gonna continue or if there will be an amount that they have to pay.
And then, we'll get a, some type of communication out to the community just so that they know the pricing and the process so that they can...
Yes.
End the, yeah.
Yep, yes, we will, sorry.
Okay, great. And then, my other one, just, let the beat, you know, the issue to death here. But on the selling of the building versus leasing, I just think, whatever we do, we need to do a multi-year ROI analysis on it. Right, we just don't wanna make a short-term decision that ends up being a, a bad long-term decision. And also with that, I think if there's a way we can look at like the population forecast, you know, because right now, the, you know, the enrollment's going down. Is that enrollment potentially gonna go up where we, we sold the building and then in a couple of years, we gotta do a refer and then to build a building? You know, that's a huge undertaking versus if you lease it or do something like that, you're preserving the future capacity if it's needed. But if we got any type of census or other details we can look at on the forecast, we can make a more informed decision on that piece.
Sounds good, thank you. Moving on to the report of the Superintendent. No report of the Superintendent. Okay, we're gonna start the voting now. Motion to vote on items I, 1, 2, and 3. After, after a second.
So moved.
Discussion, second. Discussion, Ms. Clancy.
I'm just asking about the change in policy, 5420 reporting student progress first reading, where it was changed from not less than quarterly.
Excuse me, Mrs. Clancy. I'm, I'm sorry, we're on the letter right before that.
Oh, I'm sorry, my policy.
No, no worries, no, no worries, thank you. Mrs. Baker? Is this item, item...
I have a question on, on instructional affairs. Number 3, Dr. Hibbs, under courses study. I have, I have a question. Probably in the last 10 years, our elements program in the elementary school has kind of gone down. We used to have a teacher in every, every elementary school. It went from every ele, every elementary school to one teacher for every two schools. And now, we have one teacher for three schools. My question is, has the courses study been revamped and worked on over the summer? Is there a new course of study?
There's no new course of study. The same units, as I relate to, will be implemented for the same duration.
Okay, so, the teacher time has gone down? They're going from two schools to three schools, but everything's the same?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gretchen.
All right. Local.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzemples absent. Mr. Serrano?
Yes. Motion carries. Motion to approve items J... One second, sorry. J, 1 through 4. Number 5 has been removed from the, from the policy, Jesus, from the agenda. So, we will not be voting on that. Items 1 through 4, motion to approve, vote on items number J, 1 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so, I just have a question on item 4. Reporting student progress where it was changed from not less than quarterly to not less than twice a year. I don't know if that applies to all grade levels because I'm concerned if you're only doing it twice a year, where's the feedback to the parents? If, you know, I, I know that you can look at the grades on Genesis, but I'm just concerned about that change.
So, it's actually not a change. It's, we've been grading in semesters, in grades 3 to 5, at least through last year. Trying to think if it went back prior to that. Okay. I just recognized that it was incorrect in the policy, whereas I was rewriting in the regulation. They do have daily act, I mean, parents can go on at any time and see students' progress using our student information system, Genesis, to see their grades. So, that is, you know, an avenue for grade reporting to be clearly. We communicate whenever we see a problem. Teachers reach out to families. We have conferences when they're needed. So, if, if anybody's struggling or those are that, those are the steps that we take.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the change, why the change?
Yeah, we went to semester grading last year and it just recognized that wasn't updated. You got it.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Local.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes. Motion carries. Nothing for student activities and communications, so we're going to move on to human resources. Motion to approve items 1 through 60 in human resources.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I just have a, a question about agenda, item number 8, for the student teaching internship placements. I just noticed there are six students at the same timeframe with one super, the same supervising person. So, it's six students doing, you know, being supervised for health and phys ed for six students at the same period of time.
I think, I think what you're referring to, Elaine?
Yeah.
In pulling it up, you're, I think you're talking about bunker, right? Right out of the gate, clinical experience? Yep, so, the dates are, the dates are a little different. So, you can see the top 3 are 9/24 through 10/22, only on Wednesdays. So, there's three people there. The next 3 are from 10/28, God bless, to 11/28. And remember, that's a clinical, so that's not student teaching. So, that's really, they're gonna have three people in the class.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Local. Actually, you know what? I'm gonna do this after, I have to do something that's in, in my notes, but I'm gonna do it after we vote. Go ahead. Local.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
I'm going yes for everything but L-49 and L-50.
All right, now.
Mr. La Liberty?
Abstaining on L-5, initials JG. Yes to the rest.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, note for number 60 and the reason. We haven't settled the teachers contract yet. It's out of the support stamp and the principals and the, and I would wait until after we deal with principals, I mean, with teachers.
Mrs. Baker?
Due to budgetary reasons, I'll be voting no on 3 items, 49, 50, and 60, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Note of 49, AG. Note of 50, AN. And abstaining on number 60.
Yes to the rest?
Yeah.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
No to 49, no to 50, yes to the rest.
Did you say 50?
No to 49, no to 50, yes to the rest.
Thank you.
Motion to, so, hold on, I'm sorry, let me, let me, there's two things I have to do. 49 and 50, motion fail, correct?
Um, you have 1, 2, 3, 4.
Get to 5.
4. 10, 2, 3. I have 4 for 49.
That failed. Okay.
And 3. That failed.
Were we just on 49 and 50?
49 and 50, 1, 2, 3, 4 for 52.
Motions 49 and 50 do not carry. The rest, under human resources, do carry. That's the first item of business. The second item is, I wanted to announce 2 retirements equalling 17 years in total. The first is Mrs. Angelitz Russo, 16 years. You're a rock star, Angelitz. And Nathalie Fairman, specialized instructional assistant, Thomas Jefferson, 1 year. Okay, moving on. Motion to approve items M, I'm sorry, items under letter M, financing facilities, numbers 1, 2, 3. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, said one. Janine, I appreciate you giving back to me on the analysis on the leases there that, I just wasn't sure how that additional cost was factored in, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Local.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes. All motions carried. Motion to approve letter N, number 1.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Local.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes. Nothing under negotiations. Mrs. Baker, did you wanna give a high-level update? On negotiations? There's nothing? Okay, all right, we don't, you don't have, you don't have to.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
We have a MOA for the principals and the supervisors.
Thank you.
I have a comment on negotiations. On the process. I've asked like 3 times if we as a Board could just discuss guidelines for the negotiation, guardrails, ranges, potential financial impacts of those ranges. And they've all gone unanswered and ignored. I mean, I don't know. It seems like there should be a way for the Board to have input because you're negotiating on behalf of the Board. I don't know how we go about doing that, but it'd be nice to come up with a method of that.
Yeah, well, you'll be able to vote in the end.
Well, it's not just the vote, Connie. It's, you're supposed to be negotiating on behalf of the Board.
All right.
So, I made my request. I would ask you to consider that request and maybe figure out a way by which we could discuss that.
All right, sounds good, thank you. New business. All right. Motion to open to the public.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
All in favor? I'm gonna wait till we get all the cards up here. Mr. Shaw Lindsay.
Good evening. First off, I'll probably be, probably the second person that said it, but Dr. Hibbs, welcome back. It's nice to see our captain back at the, got back at the ship. I find it kind of embarrassing that nobody on the Board publicly welcomed him back. I find it rather disturbing. It looks to me like this Board is not going to work with him, from what I'm seeing. There are, correct me if I'm wrong, there are members on this Board that have consistently voted no to bring him back. So, what does that tell you about how they're gonna work with him to bring this district forward? Mr. La Liberty, I commend you on having the stones to say, hey, let's bring him back. People were saying, kept saying no, why? Still haven't heard an answer on why you guys continually voted no. And I'd like the public to know this. It took a judge in court to let that man come back. Let that sink in for a few minutes. Just let it sink in. Members on this Board right here didn't want him back. Why? Never gave an answer, never gave a reason. It took a judge to bring him back. Just remember that. Also, talking about procedure, things weren't done right. So, why not do it now? Bring some of this public trust back that you have completely eviscerated. I don't, I don't see one person in this audience, teacher, administrator, nobody, that trusts a single thing that this Board's doing right now. Anybody who wants to contest me, please. Because quite frankly, since Reorg, public trust was already down the tank. Now, it's further, it's, it's underneath the foundation now. It is a joke. I don't know what else needs to be done. I mean, yes, Dr. Hibbs, you're back. I don't see how you're gonna be able to work consistently and, on a good path with a Board that didn't want you back. They have fought you tooth and nail on everything you've tried to do. When you've tried to save money, they voted no. Why? Don't know. Will they ever answer? Probably not. I mean, I, I can't speak for everybody. I'm just a taxpayer here. I'm furious that my taxes are going up, but yet you still have people that don't have jobs. I still didn't get an answer on how you were able to jack my tax, tax rate up 7%, but yet you still cut benefits. How couldn't you bring those 15 minutes back to these people? When you got, you guys are rah rah rah, you know, they're, they're, they're backbone, but you, you just broke their back. But nobody can give a reason why. So, again, there are people on this Board that are against you. Dr. Hibbs, I really hope that they will put their egos and their personalities and their disdain for you personally away and help you run this district as it should. Just, it's an embarrassment. It is a joke to watch what was done to him and what has happened with this district since Reorg. I can't even begin to tell you, when I ran, when I was on the Board, I don't, I didn't have this much turmoil. I didn't have this much left-to-right side battling over each other over simple votes. There was no hostility. I don't know, I don't know what else to say, other than I truly hope that this Board realizes that man is the one that runs this district, not you. You are his boss, yes, you can say no to him. But there's a reason he's a Superintendent. He did the education, he did the schooling, he paid his dues, he worked his way up. That's why he's Dr. Hibbs Superintendent, not Dr. Hibbs Board Member. So, remember that, and especially with the ethics, remember that. You do not administer the district. He does. He makes decisions that he thinks are for the best interest of these students and for the district as a whole. And again, last thing I'll say, because it's been rather frustrating to hear it, but peanut galleries, I couldn't hear half of what any of you said because they wanted them to have their little conversations. And I noticed that with certain people, the voices were louder. But other people that spoke, they were dead silent. Don't know why that could be. But also, I notice, Mr. La Liberty, I really wish that you could have had a little bit more time to explain yourself, instead of being cut off by the interim acting president. Seems to me like they, they want certain people quieted and they want some people to speak vocally louder. That's not what a president's supposed to do. I thought this board was supposed to be a collective, not one side here, one side there. So please, again, I've said this before, put the egos aside, put your personal feelings about certain people away, work together as a unit, and get the school district back on its feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Mr. Masadi, James Masadi.
Good evening, everybody. James Masadi, Washington Township. Had a quick question on I-3 from the agenda tonight, the course of study material. Am I understanding that correctly? There's like two columns on it. One looks like it's the date that the curriculum was originally written, and then there's a column for update of when it's updated. Some of the curriculum hasn't been looked at in over a decade. I was just curious, what, like, how do we determine what curriculum is getting reviewed, revised? Like, what's the cadence in determining whether curriculum that's a decade old is still relevant to be teaching? I mean, like, things change a lot, and a decade feels like a long time to not have rewritten or reviewed some of the curriculum, so I would certainly love to kind of just understand more about that process. On the sale of the building, I don't know the exact square footage of this particular building. I'm a real estate investor, so I pay attention to a lot of this stuff. Just real quick, looked up, commercial real estate office space in Southern New Jersey. Again, probably somewhere between two and three million dollars on the sale. And then, if you can lease it, again, office space, most people are work from home, going remote, it's really hard to, there's a lot of office space for lease right now, so all sounds great. You know, you're talking about eighteen dollars a square foot per year, which, again, maybe is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of revenue that we would get, so, you know, again, three million dollars sounds like a lot, but, and, and it certainly can pay for positions, but that's gonna be a one-time thing, right? It's, so, and we talk about some of the capital infusions, so, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, we should be looking for every penny possible, but just for people putting into perspective the size of the sale of the building compared to, you know, the potential hole that we actually have, that we need to start filling, like, it's a small drop in the bucket. We would still need to raise significant capital to cover the deficits and things like that. The other thing that Mr. Lindsay just referenced that I actually thought was interesting was the, this concept of, you know, he mentioned, like, eroded public trust. And in the business world, we have, there's this tool called a net promoter score. For those that maybe aren't familiar with it, if you've ever been, like, asked that question, like, how likely are you to refer us to a friend or family member, and you have to, like, rank it on a one to ten, like, that's kind of what an NPS score basically is. I'd be really interested if there's a way that maybe Mr. Distillio or whoever, like, we, can we actually ask the public, like, what their opinion of the school district is? You know, ask the public what they think we're doing well. I don't know how often that happens. I know, like, I don't, as a parent, haven't seen any of that come through, or on the Facebook pages or anything else, but I think it'd be really interesting insight, you know, potentially to get to, you know, kind of inform, you know, from a, call it a public relations perspective, right? What are the things that are kind of going on, and that can maybe help inform some of the, you know, communications that are going to be most needed to help the public support the agenda that you guys as board are ultimately trying to enact, and, and things along those lines. Because so much of it is, you know, we, on this side of, of where you guys sit, we don't know everything that's going on. So, there's a lot that you guys have to do, and there's a lot you can't communicate for a lot of different legal reasons and all kinds of stuff, but being able to, I think, understand where the concerns do lie, and being able to then, you know, prepare presentations to make sure, like, hey, like, are we actually gonna be able to answer the questions and concerns that the public has? Maybe beneficial to, you know, not meet as much resistance from, you know, there's all the, all the voices, right? You guys know what I'm talking about, so. Those are the three things, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Masadi. Mr. Tom Baldassaro.
The course of study, if you wanted to meet up.
Please.
For the curriculum, thank you. So, actually, when I went through the courses of study, I eliminated any courses that weren't running or aren't even an option anymore. Some of these are not running, so if they were, we would be updating the curriculum. Some of them, most of them, you'll see that are probably in the date range that you're talking about, are in our specialized classes, which we've molded and shifted, but we left the guides alive. That way, if we ever had to have a class, new entrance, something that had to go into that, to that group, we have that course of study. Clearly, that would then catapult, now we have a class, we have to then revise it. But these are all classes we could run. The ones we are running are the most recent.
And I'll, I will take your, the comments about the survey. I'll, I'll meet up with Mr. Distillio, we'll talk about that. I've done surveys in the past, and I, I think that they can definitely provide useful information.
I want to respond to, Dr. Hibbs, you talked earlier about, you know, where we're at financially and the need to get to a referendum at some point, and I agree wholeheartedly that that's what would be required, but you better plan to not have one, because you, I don't, I agree with what Sean and, and James just said, you don't have the trust of this district. And I do not think there is a chance in hell this town will approve a referendum with the way you've just been throwing money around, raising taxes, and cutting positions and hurting people. You're not getting a referendum. So, you have to plan to not get it. And I think you used the word catastrophic, Dr. Hibbs, and that's what this board needs to plan for. You need, you need a catastrophe plan. Because if you don't get a referendum, and, you know, you talked about the roofs and all the, our old buildings, and they have to be fixed, you're cutting on the fly in the middle of a school year. That's what you're doing, because we have no reserves. So, you need to start planning today on how you're gonna build up to afford that stuff. The other thing I want to comment again on, kind of what, what Sean talked about a little bit, you know, this board and the, and the trust. I, I continue to be disappointed in everybody up here. Did you all hear what Mrs. Baker just said? Mr. La Liberty asked for transparency. He asked for inclusion of the entire board. Think back when you were scoring RFPs. Mrs. Baker was the one who insisted, not just the business committee, everybody should do it. I thought that was a great idea. You get everybody a fair chance. Mr. La Liberty asked for transparency, say, hey, can we talk about parameters, guide rails, all reasonable things? And what was responded to him? You get to vote at the end. That's what another board member just said to a fellow board member. How is that acceptable? How can seven of you up here, sit here and think that's okay? What are we showing kids? They're watching. Why is it okay to shut a board member down? You all have equal rights, I believe. Why are you all quiet? Why are you not going back and saying, no, Connie, we should not be doing that? Everybody should be included. She doesn't get to make that decision for nine. Come on, guys. Step up when another board member messes up, call them out. We gotta stop it, we gotta start building trust.
For your comment, Ms. Nicole Lanuti, I'm sorry, Mrs. Nicole Lanuti.
When you guys took the vote, you voted down number forty-nine and fifty. Right before that, we talked about being down so many aides and out of compliance, you just took away two more specialized aides when we already can't hire enough. I think I missed why that happened, or maybe I don't understand, but what's gonna happen in three weeks when now their kids also don't have an aide? I know number forty-nine is, I don't know number fifty, but I know number forty-nine is not a new employee. She's been an aide here. She's a returned staff member. Why did you just take away her job when we are already down out of compliance, forty-something aides? If I missed something, I'm just asking for clarification, why we voted no for two more aides? And has anybody looked into IEPs specifically on how many kids require a one-to-one, how many kids require a two-to-one, and based that on how many aides are down fifteen minutes? I know that my daughter requires a one-to-one twenty-four hours a day. So far, I, her aide has the full hours, but there's other kids like mine. Did anybody actually sit down and go through IEPs to compare numbers of children, and not only numbers of children versus how many aides are not full-time, to how many are in the same classroom? Did anybody do that math? Is there a classroom where there's five kids now that don't have somebody for fifteen minutes, that one teacher has to wrangle them all? And the kids that do have one-to-ones for the full-time, like my kid, if I find out my kid's aide, one-to-one, is now helping the teacher with another, not saying that, I mean, as a human, I feel that she would help that teacher, because how could you possibly let one human do this for five kids? But she is, that puts my daughter at risk, because she requires a one-to-one for a purpose. So did anybody go through all IEPs, count the number of kids, what programs they're in, and how many are in each classroom that don't have a full aide anymore? And how many of them are gonna be out of compliance and not follow their IEP? Just curious, because we're now a couple weeks away from school, and that is a safety issue, and it's a huge concern. When I spoke up here at last meeting, uh, last public session, I asked about the last meeting, when you all took your votes back for DNOVI, and you went back to yes, I asked if that discussion was ever had, because you all changed your vote, saying, we will change our vote on the premise of having this discussion, and, nobody answered me. Nobody ever answered me if that happened. So, please answer me, that, once that meeting was over, did that discussion happen, and what was the outcome? I'm completely baffled by the fact that what just happened, when Scott asked some, of something, and the response he got from Ms. Baker, the public has been asking you guys, please work together, please work together, please work together. When it used to be a full board committee, and then all of a sudden it went back to regular committees, I stood here and said, I don't know if that's a good idea in this environment, especially in a budget crisis, when you're separating yourselves from each other. You guys all have been butting heads, and everybody knows it. Can you, like he said, put yourself aside, but wouldn't it make more sense and give you more hands in a decision, in a budget, in a budget crisis? None of you are experts in a school budget crisis, obviously. You all come from different backgrounds, but when you have something that affects our students, our staff, our community, our local economy, why would you not want to all work together? Why are, do you want to separate yourselves? Maybe going back to full board committee, as adults, maybe you can work together, but maybe having more opinions and more discussions, bounce ideas off of each other, maybe it can come up with a better solution. So at this point, now that we have no idea what to do, there's no plan, I'm asking you to maybe look at, go back to full-time, full board committees, at least for the time, to try to come up with some good solutions, because these small committees, you're not coming up with it on your own, and obviously, it's causing more turmoil, and it's, it's not working. And my last question is, it was said by the board president that what just happened, in the legal sense, was a, off of attorney advice, and I just want to know, since we were given bad advice and it's costing our district money, why is that attorney firm still allowed to sit here?
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Hartong.
I'm sorry. And Nicole, you're absolutely right, that somebody should have told Mrs. Baker that that was not the nice thing to do. And it wasn't. And I think Mrs. Baker knows that. As far as DNOVI goes, Pat, I'd like to put it back into.
Well, I, I talked about that at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting. I had asked for it to be put on the instructional affairs agenda for our last meeting. It was not put on the agenda.
Right.
So at the end of the meeting, I said, maybe you didn't have time to prepare, because it's a big discussion. So I asked if we could be put back on the agenda for September. It would be the administrators that would know whether or not that's the right place for it. I don't have that knowledge, so you'd have to decide that.
Yeah.
Anybody can always ask for things to go on an agenda. Gretchen, you can, you can fill that on there for me. Yes, for sure.
The DNOVI thing has been a big question that we've had, and we've, we've gotten nowhere with it, except being told that we need them. But, and I don't necessarily think it's not questioning the checking of IEPs, it's not legal for us to check IEPs.
As a board member?
As a board member, no.
No.
But can we get?
No, she's asking, if, Nicole was, I'm not putting words in Nicole's mouth.
Okay, okay.
She, she was asking to make sure that we were doing it as a district.
Oh, okay. I thought you were asking if we were doing it as a board.
No.
Okay. Is there a way to maybe ask, Annette, if we can get a list of students that require a one-to-one? Not like, without, without a student name? Like, we, we can't just get a number?
Yeah, the number, sure.
We can get, like, if, we have, like, thirty-four students that need a one-to-one? And how many one-to-ones do we actually have that are qualified to be one-to-ones? Because it's, it's a great question. It is, I would love to know.
If I could just interject, I know when they were making the decision of keeping some staff full-time, they did look up, make up the classrooms, students' IEPs, and they made the decisions of that, based off of that.
Yeah, there's, yeah, absolutely. They would've had to go through every child to know, otherwise, we would've been out of compliance.
Well, that's why I want to make sure that we're in compliance.
Yep. So, I mean, Nicole, Nicole is right in the fact that we still have a lot of hiring to do.
Yeah.
And we're working very hard to do that. We're working very hard to do that. As far as DNOVI goes, yes, we will put it on for a, a deep dive conversation. You're gonna have to.
I almost feel like it almost needs its own meeting, DNOVI, I really do.
Well, that's fine. I mean, it's fine.
I think, like, we need, like, a full board DNOVI meeting. Because I feel like we all feel the same way about them, and we just haven't gotten anywhere with it.
Okay. So let's figure out how to have that conversation the right way.
Yep. And then also, Nicole, I voted no on forty-nine and fifty, because I don't think a starting salary should be higher than some of the people that have been here for a while. That's why I voted, personally voted no.
Yeah, that was pointed out to us. I think that's why some of us.
I think Angel, was that, she, that?
And we wrote it down.
So, just a quick point of clarification, Nicole. You had mentioned, I, I did not reverse my vote on DNOVI. I think I was one of the only ones that didn't, for whatever reason. I just, I think I've talked about this now a few times with DNOVI. I think this was something that we've tried to discuss. I've talked to Dr. Hibbs about it, now that he's back. I think it would be good to definitely have further conversation of how we can do things more in-house. I don't think it's a real easy, from what I gather, thing that we can snap our fingers and do, but just unwinding down. So I think, you know, if we could even get the teachers involved and get people involved in the discussion to really assess and work together to get a good solution around DNOVI, because I think there are varying opinions, and I think having some of the teachers involved that work with DNOVI, and you can have both sides, I mean, hopefully in the future, we can do that, so, it's my opinion.
I'd love to get, like, teachers on it and the aides, because sometimes I think the aides know a little bit more of what goes on in the classroom. And that's just my opinion as a specialized teacher. But, um, I, I, I would think that the information we get from the aides would be more beneficial than maybe the information we get from the teachers. Because while they're busy teaching, the aides are the ones that are working with DNOVI most of the time.
Got it. We'll start it on there, and then we'll progress forward.
Right. And I agree with Linda, having been in schools where there has been DNOVI, and there's disagreement between how the teachers perceive what's going on, and they're told, leave it to the DNOVI people, and some of the things is just not acceptable. The other thing is, I also feel that what Scott asked for, those guidelines, that information, we shouldn't have to wait until the very end where we have to vote on it. We should all have that information. It's not a committee of just a few people. It's all of us that should have that information ahead of time, before we have to vote on it.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to add to the, the DNOVI vote, because I believe I was the board member who brought it back on the floor for a motion. One of the reasons was because there was a summer program starting in like, three or four days after we voted on that, and it would've been impossible to staff that, that summer program. That's number one. Number two, we discussed, and I'm not gonna say any names, but we discussed the non-renewal of a specific employee, which we then rescinded in, in one of our, okay, which, which we then, it didn't happen, and the reasoning was because we didn't have a plan. So for us to completely eliminate this contract without a plan, good initiative, bad judgment, bad timing. So I think we have to have a plan. We should go into it with a plan, but I'm not an SME, so I'm going to leave that to the SMEs like Ms. Miller, like Ms. Wechter, and we're going to discuss this in committee and as well as Dr. Hibbs.
And me, yeah.
So, Ms. Brandy Williams.
Bear with me, because as you can see, I have a lot of notes. So if you guys can get a pen and paper, so we can get some answers here. I have a question for all of you regarding, we're going to go back to this whole thing with you, Connie. Aren't you conflicted though with negotiations, given that there's a ethics complaint against you that Linda and Carol filed? So are you the only one doing negotiations? So should somebody else be helping? You shouldn't be, you shouldn't be involved in that? I don't know. Can you guys start giving reasons why you vote no? So we can have more transparency? Regarding like line item 49, Nicole said that's not a new employee. So is that just an increase because it's a dollar more than the starting rate? So is that what that is about? They're just getting an increase? You guys all, Linda and Eileen, after Sean spoke, you guys showed your displeased with Connie and how she acted or didn't act. What are you going to do about it now, though? Like, it's nice to say things in front of all of us, but what are you doing about it? How are we going to address that? Regarding Scott, Scott brought up two different things and Connie and Steve were both very dismissive towards him. Steve, you basically don't seem very open-minded about the building. You've reiterated several times that you just basically want to sell the building. You said at the very end, like, "Oh, if we can lease." But you ended your statement with, "Along with all others we have." What does that even mean? When you were talking about the lease, you ended it with, "Along with all others that we have." What did that mean? Utilizing the theater, that was my suggestion, me speaking to the economics department. I would love to know what we can do about that because we have a nice theater, we could bring in money. I was going to ask that again, is how can we start to, start scheduling things, shows and everything? You guys keep talking about the exit for the auditor. Was a new auditor approved? Not that has, we haven't heard anything. Bloom. I was going to say Baker, but I didn't want to. Middle school, you're talking about, "Oh, we make room for middle school with the elementary." Absolutely no to fifth graders with middle school. I don't know, when you were saying making room with the elementary and exploring ideas with the middle school, I don't know what that meant, but if that was the direction you were going in, is we move fifth graders up to what seventh graders, that would be a disaster. But you did hit on something regarding the lunch account. My husband and I, we constantly have to, my son likes to order whatever he wants, so we're proactive in checking the account. But if he was ordering, we didn't, like, we weren't aware of that, he would have, we would have a bill skyrocket and not even know it. So we have to proactively go and ask. There's no system for us to see what he's ordering to. We have to email somebody, I forget who it is, and they have to send us the paper. I think it's just like probably a waste of time for them, so we can see what he's ordering and what he spent. So I do think there has to be something we could do about the lunch accounts because I can't imagine how many parents don't know that their kid bought stuff. Because I had no idea my son spent $50 in ice cream and stuff. So, okay. You guys can get back to me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, Mrs. Williams. Sarah Simpson?
Good evening, Sarah Simpson. Today's not going to be my best. Washington Township, former teacher, work as a BA at this point. I'm coming up here broken, like, broken, defeated, and I haven't been this way in this district before. I've lived here forever at this point. I've worked with my child's teachers, principals, elementary supervisors, and have always gotten answers. And I'm coming so you all know what I've just been through. Last time you saw me was at the RBPAC on April 29th and I asked about the middle school sports. And I didn't approach you with, "Why can't you fund it? Where's the money?" I know the situation you're in, but I wanted to help you solve the problem. And nobody let me. Nobody let me. If I had simply sent an email that said, pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Records Act, blah, 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 "I am not doing this for commercial or business reasons, I've not been convicted of a crime, blah, blah, blah," you would have had to answer my questions in seven days. Seven days, just by doing that. That's what the law says, public records. I wanted to know how many students were involved in the middle school sports. I wanted to know what was being cut out, the costs to run the middle school sports, so I could find a solution and keep my kid and all of her friends in a program. That ship has sailed for my child because field hockey season has already started. Her friends have found other sports, they've paid for organizations, and it got nowhere. So, came to the meeting, I said, "I want to find answers." Great, I'll reach out to you. I reached out to athletic office. I called the next day, April 30th. No response. I emailed, May 2nd. What day is it now? We're in August. May 2nd, no response. I wouldn't have a job if I didn't respond to a parent in three months. Let's keep going. Then I reached out to the board office and, or to the BA office, not the board office, excuse me. And after a couple of emails, I got a response and Ms. Miller tried to work with me. This is June 2nd, June 10th, June 16th. I had a long conversation the day after graduation. Let me try and find her some answers. I was told, my biggest thing is, if we're paying to play at the high school, can we do it at the middle school? What's the rationale? How much free and reduced lunch children are involved that might be skewing the amount of money? I could have helped you solve this problem. It's what I do for a living. I sit in that seat. I came from my board meeting to this one. Nobody would answer it. And I tried to be professional and give us the courtesy of, "I worked here and all of this," to not send Oprah requests. This is not how this district needs to run. Somebody needs to help. You have people standing up here, and I'm like, I could be in tears, and I've never cried in this place, could be in tears over this, because I watch a lot of people come every week and I'm like, "Man, like, you have to bring all your dirty laundry out here?" But it's not, because you guys don't even know what's going on. You have no clue that for three months, I've been trying to get an answer. And Dr. Hibbs, thank you, because like his first day back, I saw, "Congrats, he's coming back," and I sent him an email. I was like, "Sorry, here's some more work, I need to know this." And everyone kept saying, "Well, it wasn't the athletic office, it was, 'We don't know these questions.'" And then it was, "Maybe it's the middle schools cut it, it had nothing to do with athletics," which I just don't understand. How do we not know this budget? I know every single detail about my school budget because it's my job, I have to know this. I know where it all came from, I know the decision that was made. So I've let it go. My kid's moved on, she's in so many sports, she's a rock star, and you know what? We just dealt with it. Her friend Isabella Nolan spoke to you guys and that was the only thing so far. My kid doesn't want to be in clubs, she wants to play sports. So now she equitably has nothing. She's going to go to school, she's going to sit in class, and she's going to go home and then I'm going to pay for her to play other sports anyway. She lost the opportunity. And those same kids are going to be coming to the high school and want to play sports and guess what? They are behind because we get beat and beat and beat in her sport by Clearview and Kingsway and the kids that are having good programs. And now it's even worse. How do we have no middle school sports? How do we have no middle school sports? I'm frustrated. Please don't let this be a district where anybody can get away with not giving an answer in three months and accept help. And part of that was, can we do donations? I'm actually, I was driving home from my board meeting and I came here, almost like just like ready to lose my mind, when I'm actually angry that I heard the pay to play was canceled. Like, I know no one else is, but $250 a kid we were budgeting on and zero for middle school. Well, now I want to know, where did that money go? Where did you get it? If now we don't have to, that is great, right? But if you went from one extreme to the other, what, why can't we apply middle school? And the thing is, once I walk away from here in 21 seconds, I know that I'm walking away to sit down, that no one's going to help me. No one. I'm probably red, I'm like upset. I feel lost in this district. I'm not going to social media you people, I'm not going to do all that, I don't have it in me. But I want to know that somebody is actually looking out for it. So great for FBLA and all the clubs, that was my club, right? Great for all that. They brought them back, they were allowed to get donations. We, I wanted to ask if we could have volunteer coaches. I told, like, I can't do this for you, but you have to give us a chance. So I guess my questions are, one, can you put out an email and face up to it that's telling all the parents of all the middle schools and all the elementary and people that might move into this town, "We've cut middle school sports," because nobody's told them. Parents have reached out and asked about physicals. Like, they were never, we were never told that there's no middle school sports if you don't follow this.
Time is up. Sorry about that.
Yep. And my one question, where did the money come from to not pay so much in pay to play?
I know you're very upset. This, this was obviously hard on everybody the last few months. What's really important, and I'll address what I can, is that, and you won't see the conversations that happen behind closed doors. We had great conversations today as a board. I think everybody at this status would agree that we had good, valuable conversations where we all respected each other. I think it's, it's really super important that, that those continue. So I want you to know that those, those do happen. And as far as all the cuts that were made, I, I need you just to understand the trauma of it all. And I can only speak to the front part of it and not really the middle part of it. And I'm not saying that with, with any edge. The, the front part of it was, when I was here, we had a $10 million hole. For those of you that, I know you know it's a ton of money, right? But to a school district, even a school district like ours that has a very large budget, it's, I use the word catastrophic. Typically, in any place I've ever been, when you've had to make hard eliminations, we rank order. I go nine, three, one. My nines are on fire, my threes are important, my ones are not as important. My nines have always been the things that, that affect children most, staff. You know, those types of things are, are our nines. You don't have the luxury at $10 million of even rank ordering. It's just not possible. Everything gets put on a list. It doesn't matter if it's a nine or a one, you're literally throwing everything on that list. And I think just the, just the sheer trauma of all of that, you know, certain things had to make, you know, make the list and certain things did not. Nobody, and I think I can speak for everybody, but if I'm speaking incorrectly, please correct me, nobody up here likes the fact that middle school sports are not going to run this year. Nobody. Nobody liked the fact that we had to cut roughly $78,000. I think that was a number for clubs. Nobody, nobody likes any of those things. There's a lot of hard conversations across just a lot of areas, and again, I wasn't here for a lot of it. But, you know, there's certain things that we have to look at and we have, we have options, we have choices, right? So we can either rise or we cannot. And our rise has to be, what do we need to do to figure out moving forward, how to, how to look at our situation? And I know there's lots of opinions in the rooms, I know there's lots of feelings in the rooms, in the room, but the reality is, is that we, our district is not headed for a, it's not headed for good right now. It's just not. Four years from now, it's, it's going to be awful if we don't figure out how to, how to, how to get it under control. But part of that problem is you're trying to make up for years of what didn't put us into a good spot. So the goal next year is to figure out how to have clubs and middle school sports actually operate and run. I don't want to say it's a cut. I know right now, Sarah, that feels awful to you and empty. I'm sorry. I came right back and honestly, you can probably imagine for me, it was like drinking from a fire hydrant and, and one that really had a lot of pressure when I first came back, because that's what it was. I, you couldn't even, my, my calendar was all a color, so you can understand what that means. I didn't have any spot in there at all. But I, I think I got back to you on like the third day back, I got back to you to let you know that it was definitely cut. So I, I understand that everyone's going to have a personal connection to all that we do here and, and this year, we're going to do the best we can to get through this and forecast it faster for next year, so that we all know what's going on. But yes, we can put out the community, to the community about middle school sports. I honestly didn't realize that that didn't occur. I'm happy to do that. Mike, you can help me with that. We can do that ASAP. I'm not quite sure how we make those two communications go together about pay to play and that, but we can strategize on what that looks like. And all I can say is that, you know, we're going to try next year to, to figure out how to, how to put them back in. I know it doesn't do anything for this year, but I, I heard your passion. I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that you are, you are upset and justifiably so.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Simpson.
One second, Steve, if you don't mind. Why can't we put out for donations like we did for the high school? Is it because it's a sport and it involves more funding or is it because of a reason I don't know?
I mean, we, we, and the short answer is, I think we could. You know, the, the very expensive part of the sports is transportation.
Transportation.
The part that I, and I, I don't think Mr. Murphy is still in the room, right?
No, he left.
The part that, that I, I would be nervous to say, and I don't, I, you can't quote me, but honestly, when they do sports schedules, they do them across all the districts. They're already built. There's no way, and Ralph, you probably know this, right? There's, there's sports, they're, they're already done. So could they add some more games on? Maybe. I, I don't know, but like it's, it's, it's a, it's a big logistical pull. That's not really our pull, it's the counties, countywide that would do that. So, but could we look at it? Yeah. I mean, but it's, it's a ton of money for transportation. I don't even have that number in front of me of what that is.
Okay.
You know? I don't know what that is.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if there was another reason, but, okay.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hartong. Becky Bates?
Hi, my name's Becky Bates. Thank you for letting me speak today. I have a few questions, a few comments. The first one, I'm not sure if you guys can answer at all, because I don't know, it's not necessarily, in the, it's by Bell School, there's a new camera up right across from the fire station and it's aimed towards the speed limit sign and the entrance to Bell School. I think it's called a flock camera. I don't know who has access to it. I don't know what type of data it has, I don't know. But it's aimed directly at our elementary school, which are some of our younger students. Not sure with everything going on, how that could affect our community, what type of information they're looking for, and parents coming back and forth to school, what type of complications it will have, or like just finding out who the kids are. So that's a question I have because it's aimed right at our school. And it just showed up within the last few weeks. Okay. I get so nervous up here. The other thing, I have a question about football and band. The band goes to the football games, they go to the away games, the color guard does not. If the pay to play, I want to know if the buses were given back to the bands and the two staff members added back so that they could go to the away games with the football team? There was a problem a few years ago where they did not show up and the football team and cheerleaders complained because they are a big part of that program. So I want to make sure that if these are part of the pay to play, that they do get those buses back, they get the staff members to supervise the kids. And then also with the tickets online, how do our 25% reduced staff people get tickets to that? How do they get them if they don't have access to computers or credit cards or things like that, when a lot of people do just use cash because they can't afford it anymore? Let's see. The one thing with the buses, the six buses of leasing, that is a direct result of not let's see. The one thing with the buses, the six buses of leasing, that is a direct result of not listening to the public six years ago, or whenever talking about outsourcing being a problem in our future. And today, it is a problem. We're renting, we're leasing six buses now because of problems of outsourcing. Our budget crisis is because of the mandates that were put in 10, 15 years ago with testing and curriculum online and things like that. A lot of those could have been avoided when the community said, say no. The staff has been asked to move buildings, add classes, pick up this slack, do this person's work for less money, more time, less time, no benefits. And they're asked to maybe move the people in this building to separate areas. And that is like automatically, no, we can't do that. I don't know how that, it's acceptable to ask everyone else to do that and move everything around and not even be willing to sacrifice maybe one person going to another school. Maybe they can help that secretary in that school that's now down to two instead of five. All right. I think that was kind of, and that goes along with the question about the curriculum. How is that updated? And with all the new bills coming in with AI, things being changed, things being kind of scrubbed over or reworded, closed captioning not lining up right, how does that affect our students that are like sponges, especially if they're getting the wrong information? And we don't necessarily know because teachers aren't allowed to see what are on the test. Teachers aren't allowed to see half of these things. And if they do, they're also not allowed to talk about it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mrs. Bates. Dr. Hibbs?
Yes, very quickly. George, you can look into that. Yep.
It's an LPR. It's a license plate. There's 13 of them around town. It's operated by a piece of law.
There you go. So just look at the license plates. Got it. Awesome. Great job.
It's actually very beneficial because it's in the area of the old school.
Thank you, sir. I do not think, when we talk about pay-to-play, I do not think that, that includes the putback of what you're referring to. It was simply the cost that was going to be paid by the parent, the $250, max of $500. As far as football goes, and we've had this conversation, we're going to have to be fluid with certain things because sometimes a child might not have, you know, a, a credit card from a parent to get put into the app. So we're going to have to be humanistic and figure out what we do in those cir, in those circumstances. We're going to need a little bit of grace to figure it out. But my intention is never to say to any child, you know, both parents might be working full-time, sometimes multiple jobs. We're not going to, we're not going to exclude a child from a football game or an athletic event. In that, in that case, we're going to figure it out. We need to be good for kids. So we're going to need a little grace to figure that piece out. Okay, sorry.
I'm not sure if I, if I caught your question about the bus leasing, but I, I did just want to mention, it is something that's helping our budget and helping our staff. So we obviously have a fleet of buses and we have to replace them every so many years. And every year in the budget, we buy as many as we can. It's kind of a balancing act between having the number of buses that we have, have a full staff of bus drivers, and being able to cover getting all of our kids back and forth to school and doing things like sports runs, field trips, and that kind of thing. So, and especially during COVID, when we were having trouble with, with the amount of staff and then contractors' prices started going up, we were finding it, as we built up our staff, we were finding it less expensive to lease buses. And then we could give more hours to the drivers that we have to, you know, provide a better service, especially for, like I said, after-school bus runs and sports. We weren't getting bids. So it, it's, it's helping our budget and our drivers to get more hours.
Thank you, Ms. Weckler. Councilman Peter Del Borello III.
Hello, Board. First, I wanted to say that, like Dr. Hibbs said, congratulations to Sandy. What an amazing human being. What an, just, she is just an incredible person. So anybody who knows her, if you don't know her, please get to know her because she's an amazing person. Second thing I wanted to bring up is that, you know, everything people were saying here tonight, I want to just point something out. Last month, right around this time, there was a resident that reached out that needed to go to the food bank to the school the high school has. And I, I said to her, listen, I'll give you a ride, no problem. When I went in there, I found teachers, I found administrators, you know, someone in the room now, I want to point them out. But I want to say thank you to you. It's the summertime. You could be spending time with your family and here you are serving the community. So thank you so much for that. You know, I don't know if people know, but Gloucester County has 75 food banks and all of them are busy every single week. So it's really, it's sad in some ways and great in other ways because I don't think people are looking for a handout. They're looking for a hand up. And the people that were in the line were so grateful to those people. So thank you. You had coaches in there. You had people that were really giving back. And that was really just amazing to see. The third thing was, Dr. Hibbs, before you were gone, we were talking about the shared services. I know you're committed to that. Listen, Washington Township, on behalf of the council mayor, we're committed to shared services. I know you are too. I know Mike is as well. We want to do that. We think there's a lot that we can do together. We think there's a way to save taxpayers' money. We think that, that working together, we're all one town. We're all one community. So working together is so important to us. We really want to do that. And the third or, or the fourth thing I wanted to bring up was that our Washington Township podcast will be launching in just a couple of weeks. So thank you to Mike and everybody that's been helping us do that. The great thing about this podcast is that, number one, it's no politics at all. It's about great stories of the community. It's about, it's about the children. It's about things that are going on. The great thing too is we'll be able to talk about dine and donates, car washes, things that are expect, you know, that the sports teams need because there's so many great things that they're doing. But by the time we post it, they've already happened, or they're happening tomorrow, or people say, I wish I would have known. I wish I knew that there was a play coming up, or whatever it is. So this is the voice of the residents. It's going to be a lot of great stories, a lot of fun things. We really want the school to be involved with this because we think that, that again, it's, it's not life-changing in the way that, that, that some would, would think or would hope. But I do think that it's going to help a lot of the sports. I mean, I, I am now at, at the SAB board and they're always talking about these fundraisers and how they raise money and how they keep their sports going. So this is going to be a lot of fun. I think the kids are, listen, let's be honest. You show them, you know, they could show us how to do this stuff better than we can do it, right? So they can help us market this. They can help us get that voice out there. There's a lot of people asking about a lot of developments that are happening within the town. So we have to keep that in mind and what's going on. We want to give you that information. And we're not trying to keep that from you. And we do post it, but a lot, a lot of times, by the time people say, they don't know. So this podcast will open up the doors for that. It'll give a lot of great information. Again, I want to thank everybody for everybody's service here tonight. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you, Councilman.
Steve, just real quick, a quick question. For Mr. Del Borello, I don't know who your new board liaison is. I'm looking at our group. It looks like it's Julie, Stephen, Scott. I don't know if you've all had a meeting, but I feel like shared services is talked about a lot. I just don't know how often you all get together as a group with town council. So I don't know if you have a new representative that works with the board now?
We have Councilman Dana. She's traveling out. We'll sit in there. If you have a seat in, we'll just talk.
Great, thank you. So I just, I don't know how often you guys meet, but I just remember we would at least meet like at least once a quarter with town council. So I don't know if you've had a meeting yet this year?
I don't know that we have, if I'm being completely honest.
So I don't know, just as a consideration, maybe we could get something on the books for you guys to get together with town council.
Do you want us to rekindle that conversation, sir? And then we can bring that and then we could all meet together?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. Terry Schechter. Ms. Schechter, my apologies. I have to use the restroom. I don't mean, I don't want you to think I'm walking out on you.
Good evening. Terry Schechter, Washington Township. I have two quick questions. The first is during the discussion tonight, there was some mention of an exit interview with the auditor. From my understanding, there hadn't been a decision on that RFP after last meeting. So if there's an update there. Also, last meeting, there was a lot of discussion on a policy update, I believe it's 0176. I didn't hear any updates on that or that it was discussed in any of the committee meetings since last meeting. So just wondering if there's an update there. And Councilmen, don't forget with your podcast, all the great things that happen at the library in Washington Township. That meeting's tomorrow night if anyone's interested. Thank you.
And Terry, I think we have, we have a ribbon cutting too, right? All right. And it's, it's coming up the bells, correct?
A little.
Yeah, that's good stuff. You want to take the exit interview?
Yeah, I think what the board is asking, so we have, we did finalize the RFP process and hired somebody at the last meeting. The board had one exit interview with the previous auditor and wants to have another one at our business committee. So it's two different contracts.
And the second one, I do not have an update on policy 0176. I'm sorry. That was an awkward pause.
I have a question. I'm just not here, but I have a question about the Bowman exit. Is there any chance that we can have that with the full board? We did have some findings in there that I have questions about. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem that it has to be with the, with the business committee. It could be with the full board.
Do I need to make a motion on the floor to have a vote on it?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be with the full board. It's going to be with the full board, but what are we going to do?
Everybody's, everybody good with a thumb? All right. Full board is.
Thought she was still going to be speaking when I came back. April Renzetti.
Good evening. I wasn't, again, going to speak, but I feel like I have to educate most people in the room. I've been here almost 30 years, Scott. I probably have done, this is my fourth round of negotiations, so 15 years I've sat on negotiations. This is my second year as the chair. The way it works is a committee is formed, a team negotiates, you bring that back to the rest of the people, and then there's discussions and votes. We have 800 members. We don't have 800 members on our team. You all have committees. Carol just spoke about committees and speaking to that, and that's a committee. So I think to pick and choose where you all want to be one and then have committees, not a good look. I think the fact that you don't trust your board member to come back and give you the information is a problem way before tonight. I think your, and I speak to all of you, not you as in just you, I think your disgust and mistrust for each other is bigger than doing what's right for this district. Sorry. And that goes for everybody up here. If I was able to pull the data on the amount of salaries that you gave people since you've been here and what you spent in capital projects, I love a pretty building. No problem with it. I, I'm all about it. But when you are as broke as you have been claiming we are, the salaries that you have given since you have been here, and the last time I said that, you came back with, April, it's comparable. It's not comparable when you're broke. I lost a 25-year veteran assistant because she was going to not get benefits in retirement if she didn't retire because she was going to be cut. How you vote yes to some of the salaries and some of the things that you're voting for, cutting people, is a disgrace and an embarrassment to everybody. It's horrible. Nicole, I can tell you, I, I sit on IEPs and I look at them and I make sure. I don't care what they say with what they cut. Stay on top of it. No way. We're not going to be out of compliance. No way. And I'm going to tell you right now, they're going to do everything they can to make sure we're not, but they're going to be off the backs of people that aren't trained. Sorry. I'm allowed to say that as a taxpayer. I'm allowed to say that as a taxpayer. My other issue with Danovi, there is no reason why we're not in-house. There is no reason our people are not trained. And listen, I have them in my classroom. They are amazing. The ones that I have been blessed to have are remarkable. But our people are better if they're trained properly. And if we don't have the proper people training them, that's an in-house problem. Find the proper people to train them. It's an easy fix. I just, I needed to clarify negotiations. This is split 5-4, and it's always an attack on the one side and not the other from the community because you have their support, and I'm sick of it. Connie, you're the negotiation chair for the board. I am the negotiation chair for the WTEA. Anytime I've emailed, question, needed a room or space to be with my people, you've gotten back right away. I would assume, like I'm going to do with my 800 members, share everything we discuss when it needs to get to a vote. Because can you imagine the circus it would be if everybody was on the team on both sides? So that's all. I just felt the need to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renzetti.
Let me just respond for a quick sec. Let me address the salaries. People that I've hired here, some were above, some were below. I mean, I stand by my hires. I really do. I'm, I mean, if you want to, if you want to come in and have that conversation, April, respectfully, I'm happy to have it with you. You, you mentioned the abnormal, the, the, I don't know what words you said about capital projects, but all the capital projects, I don't think we've done many at all. Have we, have we painted some things here? Yeah. But it's just paint. And listen, we can, we can agree to disagree. I don't think children should walk into rooms with paint falling off the wall. And, and honestly, I, we're not, we're not going back, we're not going back and forth.
We can't, we can't go back. Mr. Renzetti?
You don't have to agree. That's okay. And, and I, and I don't agree with you. You know, I don't agree with how you speak up here. It's very disrespectful to people. I don't think there's any need at all. You know, I don't think our building should fall down and have it look that way. Last, but certainly not least, I'm just going to say, I've, I've been in negotiations for the better part of almost, you know, 17-plus years as a superintendent. Anyplace I've ever been, what Scott is asking happens all the time. There is always parameters from the Board of Education that go to the negotiating committee. Maybe that didn't happen here, but anyplace I've ever been, that, that definitely would be something that would have, that's a conversation that would take place. And I think it's an easy conversation to take place. The board sets parameters, and then the negotiation committee goes out and carries out. And where those parameters go outside, they come back to the committee.
And that's, that's what I was getting at. And I don't know, from a legal perspective, you could weigh on it. I'm not, I'm not saying we would get into the details of negotiation, but just understand, here's the contracts that are up, right? And, you know, as a board, we think in a longer-term contract or a shorter-term contract, like, here's the county averages, here's kind of where we would like to settle. And then the committee, the negotiation committee would go off and do the best they can. But at least they know kind of where the board stands going in.
There's nothing illegal about that. It's really what the board wants to do. The board has a committee. If the board gets guidance from the majority of the board, that's how the committee will act. I mean, that's, it's really that simple at the end of the day.
Angela Teruzo.
So to piggyback back off what April just said, contrary to what you might all think, in the support staff contract, we did put language in there that provided for RBT training and all those other things. Because years ago, I went out, spent my own money and was trained as an RBT. When we lost our in-house behavior specialist, I had to give that up because I did not have supervision. And Danovi and Associates refused to help with that supervision. So that's why we didn't have it. Yes, we should have it. We have a clause in our contract that says that you can, you know, provide that training for us. We don't care how you provide it. You just provide it. And that will help get our, our people are better than Danovi. And I'm not just saying that because I'm one of them. Our people are better than Danovi. They are. As far as the food banks go with Mr. Del Borello, our support staff ran four stuff the buses last year to provide food for the food banks. I also wrote a grant with GCEA to get $900 of much-needed supplies for Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, and we got that. So we, as a support staff, even though we make nothing, we contribute everything. When, to get to number 49 and 50, Nicole, so part of the problem is when I look at the agenda, I look at it in terms of if this is a new hire, and then I look at the salary. So when I look at number 49, it says special education instructional assistant. So that's an AST. It's not specialized. There are three steps to that level. This person is on step three. Now, I'm wondering, is this a mistake? Should it have said specialized instructional assistant as a new hire? And it would have been $20 an hour. So maybe that's the issue with 49. I don't know if this person works here. I don't know who it is. But I know you said you think she may work here. So there may be a mistake on the agenda with that. Oh, okay. Never mind. And number 50, the same thing, specialized instructional assistant, that person is on step two. Step one is $20 an hour. I know that because the guides are in my head right now. So that may clarify some of that. I'm not sure. I mean, I have an obligation to bring that up as a union representative because our people spend years here, and it takes forever to get to $20 an hour or, or $15 an hour, however you want to look at it. So I have an obligation to bring that up. I do need an answer on the, on the 20-plus-year people. They have 10 days left before their health insurance expires. I know Cobra, one of our members looked up Cobra. It's $3,000 a month for Cobra. That's more than she makes. It's probably twice what she makes. She cannot afford Cobra. So these people have to have a decision. I mean, it's been dragging on now since June. You know, I mean, we just need a decision. Mrs. Clancy, you made your, you know, you made a comment about your statement. I did Oprah request her statement because I wanted to make sure that what I heard was what was there. I made that Oprah request on 7/16/25. I have nothing. I got no statement. I got nothing back. So, you know, and that's the first time I've ever had to make an Oprah request in all of the years I've lived here and all the years I've worked here and been involved here. So I still don't have that Oprah request. So maybe we can figure some of that stuff out and get on board. I've also sat, yeah, but I've also sat on negotiations. It's never been done that way because we had board members that were conflicted, that we could not share information with until right before they were going to ratify the contract. So that's the way, I mean, that's the way it's worked. the way it's worked. April's correct. I've sat on at least five or six negotiations. I've been chair of the last three years of ours, and I sat on the board as their chair for three contracts. So I know that that's, it's not something that you can share. And Scott, you know, you had to actually resign from one of those committees. So, you know, just trying to clarify that. And like I said, 49 and 50, if they want to go back and pay them the starting rate, they can work here. I don't have a problem with that unless that 49 is a mistake.
Thank you, Mrs. Teruso. Motion to close to the public. Second? All in favor? We now have to go back into executive session to discuss to discuss personnel, the items we may discuss: personnel, negotiations, updates, attorney-client privilege, legal matters. Result, I'm sorry. Action may be taken when we get out of executive session as well. Resolve that pursuant to section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving the discussion of, I'm going to say it one more time to do it formally, personnel, negotiations update, attorney-client privilege, legal matters. Further resolve that discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the board either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or at the public session at some later date. The executive session will last approximately 30 minutes in length. No, no action. The board may take action. I said that previously. Motion to close and go into executive session.
Still move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I want to wait till everybody comes back in.
Motion to go back, I'm sorry, motion to close executive.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to extend the meeting past 11:00 p.m.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of April Gladowski, Special Education Instructional Assistant, BHMS, for the 2025-2026 school year effective August 27, 2025, 5.5 hours per day, five days per week, $20 per hour pending completion of new hire paperwork. Have a second?
One second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker? Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
And Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks everybody, appreciate it.